Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Great to see you here tonight, and those of you who were here last night, nice to see you back again. Please be seated. And I trust while you've been kindly waiting, you've had a chance to read our acknowledgement to our First Nations friends and neighbors. And tonight, we're here for an important public meeting. Can I just ask, how many people are down the hallway? Anybody looking there? Nobody? Oh. Two, okay. There are seats in the back of the chamber if you want to join us, those people sitting down the hall. Could I ask our corporate officer to begin the formal public hearing?
Good evening. I will read the public hearing procedure. So council is convening this public hearing to consider and receive submissions regarding proposed official community plan by law 4985, 2018, amendment by law number 5205, 2024, proposed zoning by law number 4662, 2010, amendment by law number 5206, 2024, and proposed phase development agreement authorization by law number 5207, 2024 regarding the Cypress Village and Eagle Ridge development. A public meeting will be held concurrently with the public hearing to receive submissions regarding proposed road closure and removal of highway dedication by law number 5208, 2024 regarding the Cypress Village development. Anyone who believes that their interest in property is affected by... Sorry about that. Anyone who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws will be heard and/or may provide written submissions in either in person or via email to correspondence@westvancouver.ca. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Council may ask questions of you following your presentation, but council's function during this public hearing is to listen to the views of the public, not to debate the proposed bylaws. After the public hearing and concurrent public meeting has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations. Your only opportunity to comment on the proposed bylaws is during the public hearing. Council is not permitted to receive further submissions once council has closed the public hearing. Council has received documents which are available for the public to view. A copy of these may be obtained from myself during the public hearing and concurrent public meeting. These documents can also be viewed online at westvancouver.ca/news/notices. Please note that an online copy of the documents will not include items received after noon today. To maintain order and to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard, here are the rules of procedure. A speakers list has been established. For those attending in person, you may place your name on the list at any time throughout the public hearing located at the front door and concurrent public meeting. If you are speaking from prepared remarks, council requests that your copy be provided to myself. To participate via WebEx, please phone 604-925-7004 and provide your name and telephone number to staff who will add you to the speakers list. When it is your turn to address council, staff will allow you to unmute your microphone and turn on your webcam in order to provide you with your public input opportunity. Please note that staff will not be in a position to provide you with a specific time slot when you register to speak, so we ask that participants who wish to address council be available for the duration of the public hearing and concurrent public meeting. Council requests that you please begin your remarks by providing your name and municipality of residence. If you are speaking on behalf of some other person or organization, council requests that you please identify the name of that person or organization. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to the subject of the proposed bylaws. Please be respectful to others. After everyone has spoken once, you will have an opportunity to speak subsequent times to provide additional information if you wish. Please follow the process outlined above to be re-added to the speakers list. If you have any concerns about the rules of the hearing, please address your comments to the chair. And for this public hearing, council has received one staff report and 105 written submissions. The council set the date for the public hearing on June 3, and the statutory notice of the public hearing was published in the North Shore News on June 12 and 19. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dallas. I'll turn it over now to Mr. Bailey for a staff presentation.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and members of council. You know, it's a big night tonight. We're here to hear from the public on a series of bylaws that if eventually approved, will result in the realization of two longstanding community goals and real pillars of your strategic plan. And the first one is the district acquisition and protection of 262 acres of land in Eagle Ridge that are currently owned by British Pacific Properties. And those lands have outstanding environmental and recreational value for the community. Secondly, again, a key component of the community's goals and pillars of your strat plan are creating a new compact, mixed-use, sustainable urban community in Cypress Village. And as you know, the presentation of this work is the culmination of years of community input and effort. And just, I just want to thank everybody before we even start, just offer sincere thanks to everyone who has contributed. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. The proposal is also the result of, I think, a really strong collaborative working relationship with the current landowner, British Pacific Properties, and really in an approach that recognizes that we can achieve mutual success by working together. And I know that BPP is here and will likely want to speak to council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to present. Nicole Olennick to my left here will lead the staff presentation and is joined by Mr. Blair Urb, Mr. Jay Wallenberg, my colleague Jen Moller, and Sue Kettler, who are all available to answer questions at the end of the presentation. And then we look forward to hearing from the community at this important public hearing. So, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and over to Nicole.
Thanks very much. Nicole, it's over to you. And I think it is important just to set out that this tonight, this public hearing is a application by the District of West Vancouver. British Pacific Properties may be the landowner, but it's actually an application brought by the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We're happy to be here today to provide a presentation about the proposed plan and bylaws related to Cypress Village and Eagle Ridge as context for the public hearing and concurrent public meeting tonight. I'll start with a review of some background information about the context and goals, review the process that led to the proposed plan and related bylaws and agreements, provide some highlights of the proposed area development plan, an overview of the main business terms that have been negotiated between the district and the landowner, British Pacific Properties, an overview of the proposed package of bylaws and legal agreements, and then summarize next steps and staff's recommendation for moving forward. So in terms of the context and goals, this map shows the upperlands, which are the lands north of the Upper Levels Highway and south of the Cypress Provincial Park. They stretch from the eastern edge of the municipality out to Horseshoe Bay. They include lands both above and below the 1,200-foot contour, which is this line here on the map. Lands above the 1,200-foot contour are designated as a limited use and recreation area and zoned for community use. No changes to the OCP designation or the zoning for these lands are proposed. The upperlands below the 1,200-foot contour are divided into four planning areas: Eagle Ridge, Inter Creek, Cypress West, and Cypress Village. These areas are all west of Rogers Creek, which is the neighborhood currently being developed. And you can see in the table here that each of these four planning areas is quite large and measured in terms of hundreds of acres. This map shows land ownership in the upperlands, and there's two major landowners: the district, whose lands are shaded blue in this image, and British Pacific Properties, or BPP, whose lands are shaded orange. If we look at the four remaining planning areas, you can see a lot of orange, BPP owns more than half of the lands in those four areas. A little history about the upperlands. Almost 100 years ago, BPP acquired 4,000 acres of land in the upperlands from the district. The lands were already zoned to allow single-family development, which is important to keep in mind. Shortly after that, BPP designed and built the Lions Gate Bridge and then started developing the upperlands, starting in the east and moving westward, with new neighborhoods planned incrementally over time. Much of this development was large, single-family houses on large lots with limited amenities and services and not much land protected in a natural state. In the 1990s, neighborhood planning began to shift towards preserving more land in a natural state and including a broader range of housing types, including multifamily housing. A couple of examples include the Stonecliff apartment buildings on Cypress Bowl Road, which involved a transfer of development potential, and the 2008 Rogers Creek Area Development Plan, which includes multifamily housing, preserving large portions of the neighborhood in a natural state, and which anticipated a nearby mixed-use village. During 2013 to 2015, the council-appointed Citizen Volunteer Upper Lands Working Group completed its work, which looked at planning the upperlands' neighborhoods in a holistic way, and they recommended protecting two of the four planning areas, Eagle Ridge and Inter Creek, and transferring the development potential from those lands into new compact neighborhoods in Cypress West and Cypress Village where development would be clustered. This holistic approach is really possible because the privately-owned lands in the upperlands are mostly owned by one landowner, BPP. Transferring the development rights means the lands in Eagle Ridge and Inter Creek can no longer be developed with single-family housing, which is allowed under the current zoning, or any form of development. These lands would be retained for recreation and conservation purposes, and then additional residential development would be included in the new neighborhoods in Cypress Village and Cypress West. In 2018, the district updated its official community plan to include this overall vision and to include objectives for Cypress Village, and that update to the OCP was based on extensive community input at the time that supported that holistic vision. Then in 2019, the district began this process we have underway, a comprehensive planning and engagement process to start implementing that overall vision in the OCP, and that's led us here tonight. To accommodate the transfer of development potential in Cypress Village and Cypress West, almost all of the units must be multifamily because of the amount of land in the planning areas being limited, and because including a large portion of multifamily housing is consistent with the goals of creating a compact, sustainable community. Transferring all of the development potential from Eagle Ridge and Inter Creek into Cypress Village and Cypress West at one time would involve more than 50 years or more of residential development. And really, that's too far in the future to reasonably plan for now, so the district's implementing this overall vision in steps. This first implementation step includes Cypress Village, because it's the next neighborhood moving west from Rogers Creek, where development's currently underway, and then Eagle Ridge, which has the most environmentally significant lands. So that means the planning for Inter Creek and Cypress West will happen in the future, likely when Cypress Village is nearing buildout in about 20 years or so. So a key point here is that the OCP already sets out the broad policies and vision about how the upperlands should be planned and developed, and this current district-led process aims to develop detailed, area-specific policies and bylaws for Eagle Ridge and Cypress Village that are consistent with that overall broad vision in the OCP. This slide illustrates the two interconnected goals which have really driven this process, as Mr. Bailey mentioned. The first goal is to protect the lands in Eagle Ridge that are currently owned by BPP for conservation and recreation. You can see those lands with this blue-lined cross hatching here. And then the second goal is to create a compact, sustainable urban community in Cypress Village that incorporates that transfer of development potential needed to help enable the protection of the lands in Eagle Ridge. Next, some information about the process. This planning and engagement process has been underway for the past four years, and the process was divided into three main phases, and then Phase 3 was divided into two steps. The focus of Phase 1 was to communicate the overall vision and goals and to collect community input about the share of the Eagle Ridge lands to protect at this time and the scale of development to plan for in Cypress Village to enable that protection. The focus of Phase 2 was then to present a proposed land use plan and development concept for Cypress Village and to seek community input on those. As a first step in Phase 3, a full draft of the area development plan for Cypress Village and Eagle Ridge was prepared and published on the project webpage, giving the community an opportunity to review the draft and ask questions prior to the bylaw adoption process. And then the second step in Phase 3 has included a few components. First, it involved refining the ADP to reflect input on the draft from the public and to reflect additional technical work, input from other agencies, and negotiations with BPP. And then the second step in Phase 3 also involved preparing the full package of proposed bylaws and legal agreements, which are based on the policies in the ADP. We finalized the proposed ADP, bylaws, and legal agreements in April. We published a series of updates for the community during May. We hosted a public information meeting on May 22 to provide an overview of the proposed approvals package prior to the bylaws process. We presented the proposed bylaws for council's consideration of first reading on June 3, and at that meeting, council gave the proposed bylaws first reading and passed related resolutions, including setting a public hearing and concurrent public meeting for tonight, which are part of the bylaws process. In addition to extensive technical analysis throughout the process, community and stakeholder engagement and outreach have really been central to this process and have helped to shape the proposed ADP, which I mentioned is the foundation for the proposed bylaws and legal agreements. All of the phases of engagement included significant awareness building, numerous communication methods with the public, and extensive engagement opportunities. This slide presents some summary statistics from previous phases, and the main takeaway really is that the amount of outreach and the amount of input has been considerable. Each phase in the process has built upon the direction from previous phases. At the end of Phase 1 and Phase 2, we presented the results to council, and we had unanimous support to move to the next phase. We heard from the community that it's important to protect all of the lands owned by BPP in Eagle Ridge at this time rather than in phases, so that's reflected in the proposed plan, bylaws, and legal agreements. We also heard from the community that obtaining public ownership of the BPP Eagle Ridge lands is important, so that's also incorporated into the proposed materials. There are some district-owned sites in the Cypress Village planning area. One of these is the Works Yard. The district did some work several years ago, looking at options for relocating the Works Yard, and found that the options would be limited and it would be very expensive, so the plan assumes that the Works Yard will remain in its present location for the foreseeable future. The district also owns the site known as McGavin Field, which is where BPP's pop-up Cypress Village is currently located under a temporary license, and the plan retains McGavin Field, the McGavin Field site for community use, which is consistent with covenants on title in favor of BPP. The proposed plan, bylaws, and legal agreements reflect the same total amount of housing and employment space and the same list of community amenities that were presented in the draft ADP. They also include the same list of other mechanisms that are needed in addition to density to help achieve district ownership of the BPP Eagle Ridge lands and to help achieve the desired amenities to be paid for by BPP in Cypress Village. Next, I'll walk through some highlights of the proposed area development plan. So this slide shows some photos of Eagle Ridge on the left and an aerial image on the right, and the BPP lands are shown here shaded orange in Eagle Ridge. The BPP Eagle Ridge lands have a total of 262 acres, and that's bigger than Lighthouse Park. The proposed plan includes obtaining district ownership of BPP's 262 acres in Eagle Ridge and dedicating these lands as park, along with 704 acres of district-owned land that are in and near Eagle Ridge that are not yet dedicated as park. So when those lands are all combined, with White Lake Park and with Nelson Canyon Park, that will create a municipal park area of about 1,350 acres in and near Eagle Ridge. And then when also combined with the recently-dedicated Upper Lands Park, this will form a contiguous municipal park area of almost 3,300 acres. This table shows the total size of the proposed community and housing mix for Cypress Village. The proposed ADP and the zoning include 3,711 housing units for Cypress Village. The size of community helps to enable the protection of the lands in Eagle Ridge that are currently owned by BPP, and it also means that the village will be large enough to support a viable commercial core with amenities and transit service. You can see that almost all of the housing will be multifamily units, and that'll help to achieve a compact community. And you can see that there's a mix of affordable rental, market rental, and strata apartments included in the plan. It'll take a couple of decades to develop Cypress Village, so we anticipate that the population of the village will be about 300 people in five years, about 1,700 people after 10 years, and then about 6,900 people at buildout, which will be in about 20 to 25 years. This is the proposed land use plan for Cypress Village, and there's five main elements. So first is the compact mixed-use village core, which is the red-shaded area marked with the 1. Buildings in this area will mostly be mixed-use with residential above commercial space such as restaurants, shops, and services. Second, there's these orange-shaded and marked with a 2 area, which is a multifamily residential area, and the purpose of that is to concentrate additional housing near the village core. Between those two areas, the proposed zoning allows 13 taller buildings with heights up to 25 stories, and then other buildings can be up to six stories. Third, there's the lower-density residential areas, which are these yellow-shaded areas marked with the 3, and that'll include some small, single-family houses, duplexes, triplexes, and townhouses. Fourth, there's employment areas, which are outlined in blue or shaded blue, and that includes some existing uses, such as the district's Works Yard site, which is here, and the new business park area, which is south of this new road, I'll show it on the map here, we call it West Mount Connector, which will connect from Cypress Bowl Road down to the highway interchange here. This space will allow for business park-type uses, so things like office, light manufacturing, craft breweries, things that are compatible with a location near a mixed-use village core. And then fifth, and finally, there's a cluster of community facilities on the McGavin Field site, and also a planned fire station, new fire station on the Works Yard site. The proposed ADP includes an extensive network of trails, paths, parks, and plazas. The plan requires that at least 30% of the lands in Cypress Village be retained as natural areas, including creeks, riparian areas, and recreation areas. So that means that over 100 acres of land in Cypress Village will be retained for conservation and recreation in addition to those lands being protected in Eagle Ridge. The proposed plan includes the community amenities to serve residents of the village and nearby areas, and those are all listed here on the screen. So that includes a new fire station, a community center similar in size to Glen Eagles Community Center, childcare spaces, parks and plazas, paths and trails, over 50 acres of land for mountain biking, a new sports field, a site for an elementary school, as well as independent transit service, which will be bus service connecting the village to Park Royal, and commercial space, so again, restaurants, cafes, shops, and services. This is an artist illustration of what the village could look like upon buildout, and then as I click through the next few images, you could see how the village could develop over time in five-year increments, and generally, the progression of development is anticipated to be from east to west. Okay, then, the business terms next. I mentioned earlier that BPP's lands in Eagle Ridge and Cypress Village are currently zoned to allow single-family subdivisions. A total of 626 large, single-family houses on large lots could be built under the existing zoning in Eagle Ridge and Cypress Village with over 6 million square feet of allowable floor space. This existing zoning creates significant existing land value for BPP, so in order for BPP to be willing to transfer ownership of its Eagle Ridge lands to the district and build the new mixed-use village instead of single-family subdivisions, BPP's land value based on the proposed plan must be approximately equal to BPP's land value under the existing single-family zoning. So in addition to being based on comprehensive planning principles that were developed during the process, the amount and type of development in Cypress Village and all of the terms and conditions about the development, including the provision of amenities, were negotiated between the district and BPP. And the negotiations were informed by financial analysis of the land value supported by the two scenarios: the land value assuming development under the existing single-family zoning and under the proposed rezoning. And we refer to that as the land value for land value analysis. The next few slides summarize the major business terms that have been negotiated with BPP and that are incorporated into the proposed bylaws and legal agreements. First, the business terms call for BPP to transfer ownership of all of its 262 acres in Eagle Ridge to the district so the district can dedicate these lands as park. The value of those lands is estimated to be about 500 million under the existing single-family zoning. This estimate is based on detailed land development financial analysis by the planning team, as well as estimates by an independent appraiser retained by the district, which was the Altus Group. It's also backed up by BPP's land value advisors. And the estimates from all three parties converge on this figure as the current market value of the lands, assuming the lands are developed now under the existing single-family zoning. And I'll make a few points about that again later. In addition to transferring ownership of the Eagle Ridge lands to the district, BPP will be obligated to fund and construct amenities in Cypress Village or provide cash contributions towards amenities that the district will build. So that will include providing the independent transit service, all of the parks, plazas, multi-use paths, hiking trails, and childcare spaces in Cypress Village at BPP's cost. BPP will also provide two subdivided service sites to the district or to a nonprofit housing operator selected by the district to accommodate the affordable rental housing component of the plan. The district can then lease these sites to nonprofit housing operators who can build and operate the housing. BPP will provide cash contributions towards the fire station, the sports field, the community center, and mountain bike trail building. And these amenity contributions have a total cost of about 115 million in today's dollars. So combined, the value of the Eagle Ridge lands under the existing single-family zoning and the cost of amenities that BPP is providing or contributing to in Cypress Village totals over 600 million in value that the district is getting in the deal. BPP will also pay for all the roads and services needed for Cypress Village. They'll pay for the district's costs for reviewing and processing applications and permits for the Cypress Village development. They'll dedicate parks and natural areas in Cypress Village to the district over time as subdivisions proceed. The business terms also include reduced municipal DCC rates in Cypress Village and in Rogers Creek areas 5 and 6, and that reflects that BPP is paying directly for and supplying the local infrastructure and parks directly, rather than paying DCCs and then the district using those funds to provide the works or build the parks. In exchange for all of that, the district will rezon Cypress Village to allow 3,711 housing units with a mix of unit types and tenures. The plan includes over 5.1 million square feet of residential space and just over 380,000 square feet of employment space. To achieve the public ownership of BPP's Eagle Ridge lands and that negotiated package of amenities from BPP for Cypress Village, there are some district asset allocations that are required. The business terms include the district allocating 13 million in funds on hand in the CAC reserve towards the new fire station in Cypress Village. These are funds that were negotiated from BPP during previous rezonings in Rogers Creek, and they were intended to be used towards amenities such as a fire station in Rogers Creek or the future Cypress Village. The district will also use 1 million in funds on hand that were provided by BPP for McGavin Field towards creating the new sports field in this location. So both of those are purposes that are consistent with what the funds were collected for. The business terms also call for the district to allocate a total of 14.625 million in DCC reserve funds to projects that are associated with Cypress Village and to the district's acquisition of the BPP Eagle Ridge lands. And again, those are all purposes consistent with what the DCC funds were collected for. As part of the terms for acquiring BPP's Eagle Ridge lands, there's 17 pieces of district-owned land that total just over 21 acres that are proposed to be transferred to BPP to help accommodate some of the residential development, business park development, and roads in Cypress Village. So that includes some parcels, some portions of parcels to be subdivided out, and some road rights of way to be closed. None of these are readily developable on their own based on the slope, shape, and the fact that there's restrictive covenants on title in favor of BPP for over 85% of those lands that limits the district's use to public uses, so the district couldn't develop residential or commercial development on those lands. There's one main implication of the land transfer. The district's existing material transfer facility is located on one of the parcels, so that will need to be relocated to the Works Yard site. The district is responsible for building some of the amenities with funds that BPP is providing as part of the proposed legal agreements, plus those allocations from the CAC reserve that I mentioned. So that includes the fire station, community center, sports field, and mountain bike trails. The contributions from BPP and the allocations from the CAC reserves have been set based on assumptions about the facility size and functions, and those figures are intended to fully cover the costs. There's also some tasks that the district will be responsible for, so that includes using reasonable efforts to try to obtain some Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure lands and a right-of-way over a BC Hydro parcel, and those will help to facilitate the preferred alignment of the West Mount Connector and the Business Park. The agreements require the district to provide a portion of the McGavin Field site to the school district for an elementary school, when the school district has funding to build and operate a school here. The district will set up a Cypress Village Applications Review Project Office that will be cost-recovered from BPP. And the proposed ADP calls for the district to undertake future processes to plan for trails in Cypress Village, trails above the 1,200-foot contour, and to explore... and to explore management options for the lands in Eagle Ridge. So in terms of the implications of those business terms for the district, first, the land value supported by the proposed plan and the business terms is less than the land value supported by development under the existing single-family zoning. So that means that the analysis is in the district's favor, and the planning team is very comfortable recommending that this is a good deal for the district. It also means that it would not be reasonable financially to expect BPP to provide additional amenities beyond what's already been included into the package of terms. Said another way, the district is getting items from BPP with a combined estimated value over six hundred million, but giving significantly less than this in terms of the value of the density and the other mechanisms. There's been some questions about the significance of the five hundred million estimated value for the BPP lands and how that's been factored into the land value for land value analysis. And we wanted to emphasize five points on this. First, the district is not paying five hundred million for the BPP Eagle Ridge lands. That's the estimated land value if the land were available for single-family development today. So that's the land value BPP is giving up by transferring ownership of those lands to the district. Next, the purpose of the appraisal that was undertaken was to make sure that the district did not overestimate the value of the BPP Eagle Ridge lands as part of the negotiations. The assumed value of the Eagle Ridge lands for land value business terms negotiations was actually about half of the estimated five hundred million value, because the parties agreed that the land value should be discounted on the assumption that Eagle Ridge would not be developed until after Cypress Village, Cypress West, and Inter Creek were developed. And that delay in development actually reduces the value of the lands. The final business terms reflect that BPP is actually realizing less than half of the Eagle Ridge land value. So the district is getting BPP's Eagle Ridge lands, which are worth about five hundred million if they were developed now under the existing single-family zoning, but granting much less value to BPP in terms of density and other mechanisms. That's why the land value for land value analysis is in the district's favor. Next, one of the technical pieces of work that's been completed is a financial impact analysis, and that evaluated whether Cypress Village is likely to result in any significant financial costs or benefits to the district or to taxpayers. In terms of capital costs, as I mentioned, BPP is paying for all of the onsite infrastructure and most of the amenities in Cypress Village, with the district allocating some CAC reserves on hand towards certain works and amenities. So the main capital implication to the district that's caused by Cypress Village are the costs associated with relocating the material transfer facility and reconfiguring the works yard site to accommodate that. Those costs are estimated to total about two-point-eight million spread over the three years following bylaw adoption. The plan also creates the opportunity for the district to cost-share some of the major infrastructure that's needed to serve both Cypress Village and existing neighborhoods outside of Cypress Village. So those are costs that the district will be budgeting for and incurring anyways. But now there'll be an obligation for the district to spend the money on a certain schedule. And there'll also be opportunities to tap into economies of scale so that the district's costs would be less than if you completed the projects on your own. In terms of operating costs and operating revenues, the estimated future property taxes on development and other revenues such as community center program fees in Cypress Village are expected to be sufficient to cover the estimated operating costs to the district that are related to Cypress Village. So costs like operating and maintaining the roads, community center, fire station, parks, and rec. So that would mean that the district could adjust the mill rate, so property taxes throughout the municipality could be lower than they otherwise would be. Or some municipal services could be expanded without having to increase property taxes. So overall, Cypress Village is highly unlikely to have a negative impact and likely to have a net positive impact on the district's operating budget and finances. Another piece of technical analysis that was completed to inform the plan is traffic impact analysis. And this was reviewed and approved by the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. The traffic analysis found that the impact on Highway One, Roads in West Vancouver, and the Lions Gate and Second Narrows Bridges is small in the context of long-term increases from other sources, including development elsewhere in the region and increased BC ferries traffic, with less than one percent of vehicle traffic on the North Shore major road network estimated to be attributable to Cypress Village at build-out. With the planned road improvements that'll be part of developing Cypress Village, all of the local intersections will function at acceptable levels of service. And travel times from West Vancouver to other parts of the region will not be materially longer because of Cypress Village. And the impact that is attributable to Cypress Village is estimated to be less than a two-minute increase for most trips. And this is largely because traffic increases will be gradual. The village will take about two decades to develop. The village is purposely being planned to include amenities such as a community center and shopping, as well as transit, to intentionally help reduce the need for residents to travel outside of the village in their cars to meet their day-to-day needs. And also, the new West Mount Connector will help to disperse and distribute traffic. There are also some significant non-financial benefits to the district and to residents of West Vancouver. So the plan will achieve public ownership and protection of the BPP Eagle Ridge lands, which will create a major park asset for the community. Forest protection in Eagle Ridge and Cypress Village has significant value as natural capital, protecting sensitive ecosystems, and helping to address climate change. The plan will result in improved services and fire protection for nearby areas. The plan will expand housing choices, diversity, and affordability in the community, providing options for seniors to downsize within the community, adult children to stay close to their families, and helping to attract and retain workers in jobs that are important to the community. So jobs such as first responders, healthcare workers, and teachers. The plan includes a business park space, which will help diversify the district's tax base. And the plan will create a vibrant new place in West Vancouver for residents to enjoy for outdoor recreation and entertainment. The approvals package includes proposed bylaws and legal agreements, and there are four main proposed bylaws. So first, an OCP Amendment Bylaw, which proposes to adopt the ADP as part of the OCP, redesignate the BPP lands from future neighborhoods to limited use and recreation area, and make some other consequential text and map amendments. Next, a zoning amendment bylaw, which includes a proposed new zoning district called CV, Cypress Village Zone, to govern the development of the village. That zoning bylaw also proposes to rezone BPP's Eagle Ridge lands from single-family zones to community use. Then there's a phased development agreement, PDA Authorization Bylaw. And that includes the PDA legal agreement between the district and BPP that sets out the obligation of both parties regarding amenities and infrastructure. And that's the tool that locks in the zoning and servicing standards for Cypress Village, giving BPP security of those for the twenty-year term of the PDA. And fourth, a park dedication bylaw, which proposes to dedicate BPP's two hundred and sixty-two acres in Eagle Ridge as park, once the district has obtained title to them, along with seven hundred and four acres of district-owned lands in or near Eagle Ridge. For the first three of these, the OCP Amendment Bylaw, Zoning Amendment Bylaw, and PDA Authorization Bylaw, the Local Government Act requires a public hearing be held, which is the purpose of tonight. The phased development agreement is one of two proposed legal agreements. The second is a proposed land agreement, which sets out the terms for the transfer of BPP's Eagle Ridge lands to the district and the transfer of certain district-owned lands in Cypress Village to BPP. It also sets out the obligation that I mentioned for the district to try to obtain interests in some MOTI and BC hydrolands to help facilitate the West Mount Connector and the business park. And it includes some other covenants and ancillary agreements and rights-of-way-related documents. There are also twelve ancillary or supporting bylaws that are needed to help implement the policies in the ADP and the business terms. And those are listed here on the screen, and they're included in tonight's package. For one of these, the first, the Proposed Road Closures and Removal of Highway Dedication Bylaw, the community charter requires that an opportunity be given for those who consider they are affected to make representations to council. And so that's the subject of tonight's concurrent meeting. In terms of next steps, after the closure of the public hearing and the concurrent meeting, the next step in the bylaws process is for council to consider giving second and third reading to the proposed bylaws. Based on the planning policy context and the overall goal of trying to achieve public ownership of the BPP Eagle Ridge lands, the direction from council in previous phases of this project, the extensive and helpful community and stakeholder input along the way, the results of the technical analysis and the financial analysis, the team and staff recommend giving the sixteen proposed bylaws second and third reading. Thank you.
Thanks very much. That was a truly exceptional presentation. Now, I see representatives of British Pacific Properties. It is your land. Would you like to begin with any comments? Thank you. Mr. Kroll, thanks for joining us this evening. I was a little worried when you were listening to the economic analysis, given this evening that you might get up and leave.
I'm still here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council, staff, expert consultants, members of the public who've all gathered here tonight. My name is Jeff Kroll. I'm president of British Pacific Properties. I'm also joined here tonight by Bryce Tupper, Vice President of Planning Development. He's here to answer any hard questions, but the easy questions can be directed to me. So fourteen years, for fourteen years, I've been waiting for this opportunity to formally address council on a community plan for Eagle Ridge and Cypress Village. But we can go back thirty years where this public process really got started, when Mayor Mark Sager appointed the Upper Lands Steering Committee in late nineteen ninety-six to guide the planning and development of the upper lands. And we can also go back to nineteen thirty-one, when British Pacific Properties Limited was expressly formed to develop real estate in West Vancouver and develop that real estate over a very, very long time. We believed in West Vancouver in nineteen thirty-one in the long run. We believed in West Vancouver during the Great Depression. We believed in West Vancouver during the Second World War, the recession of the nineteen eighties, when we didn't sell anything for years. We believed in West Vancouver during a worldwide pandemic. We've believed in West Vancouver for over ninety-three years, and we continue to believe in West Vancouver for the next ninety-three years. The planning process for Cypress Village was first presented to council in April two thousand and sixteen, when BPP was given the green light to start its own community engagement, public consultation process. We asked Paul Smith, the legendary storyteller and West Vancouver resident, to write the future story of BPP and Cypress Village. And Paul called Cypress Village "our bridge to the future", comparing its transformational significance to the Lions Gate Bridge. But I've realized over the last eight years that our true bridge to the future is the preservation of Eagle Ridge for perpetuity. The protection of BPP's two hundred and sixty-two acres of Eagle Ridge, the seven hundred and five acres of district-owned land added to the existing White Lake Park, Nelson Canyon Park, and the recently dedicated one thousand nine hundred and thirty-two acres of park in the upper lands creates a thirty-three-hundred-acre contiguous protected green space stretching from the Caplan and Watershed all the way to Horseshoe Bay. This is the bridge for future generations. This is the lasting legacy for West Vancouver, the region, and the province. A shining beacon of conservation for the whole world to see. And a hundred years from now, people will be saying, wow, we were so fortunate to have someone have the foresight to protect all this land as park so close to a major urban center. And that someone could be this council. I'd like to say thank you to the Upper Lands Study Review Working Group for pushing the idea that Eagle Ridge could be preserved for future generations at no cost to the taxpayer by linking its preservation to the creation of an amenity-rich, mixed-use village that would be a gateway to mountain recreation. So while a lot of the focus is on Eagle Ridge, I also believe that if council approves this plan that's before tonight, twenty years from now, people will be saying, wow, this place is amazing. I want to live here. I want to work here. I want to shop here. I want to visit here. I want to hang out here. So thank you to staff and their expert consultants for taking the idea of protecting Eagle Ridge, creating a mixed-use village on the mountainside, and coming up with a framework to make it happen. This area development plan that I'm holding up is one of the most comprehensive planning documents that you'll ever see. Everything you need to know about Eagle Ridge and Cypress Village is all here in one place. And most importantly, it is the product of the most comprehensive public engagement and community consultation process in the history of this municipality. This is an exceptional plan, and I'd like to thank the members of the community that have been coming out since two thousand and twelve for the Upper Lands Review, for BPP's consultation two thousand and sixteen, for the two thousand and eighteen OCP update, and three rounds of public consultations since two thousand and twenty with the district. This is the community-driven plan. It's the community's plan for the community. And the input of the community is critically important to the success of this plan. Thank you to council for all your time and efforts over the last year and a half, and some of you even longer. Under your direction and leadership, you have ensured that there is an exceptional community plan being brought forward for consideration. This has also been a very personal journey for me. I was born and raised on Bayridge Avenue, less than a kilometer from the heart of this proposed village. And I don't know about you, but I know exactly where I was when I first heard the word Cypress Village. It was two thousand and five. I was in the boardroom at BPP being interviewed by President Jim McLean, who I see here is tonight. And Jim told me that the community was changing, and the company needed to change with it. The well-being of the company has always been inextricably linked to the well-being of the community. He talked about a village center near the first switchback of Cypress Bowl Road, moving away from predominantly single-family development towards more multifamily, more amenities, and more compact neighborhoods. It was an opportunity for me to be part of creating a world-class, sustainable, complete community in my own backyard. Needless to say, I jumped at the chance. After joining the company in two thousand and six, the mayor, Pamela Gold, Ms. Jones, took me aside and said, echoing the words of Jim McLean, that the district was going to do things differently going forward. We needed to provide a greater diversity of housing choices. We needed to be protecting more green space. We needed to provide alternatives to moving around that wasn't an automobile. We needed to be building more energy-efficient homes. We needed to create more complete communities. And planning for future development would be led by the community, not the developer. The result of this was the Rogers Creek Working Group, which led to the Rogers Creek Area Development Plan and a new way of doing things in West Vancouver. And we took what we learned from that process and applied it to Eagle Ridge and Cypress Village. So since the draft area plan was released in April two thousand and twenty-two, which is now almost over two years ago, and more recently, the first reading of the bylaw, associated bylaws for Eagle Ridge and Cypress Village, we've been humbled by the support we have received from the community leaders. And these are people that volunteer tirelessly for a variety of community groups dealing with arts and culture, environment, recreation, social needs and well-being. And it's been very humbling to have their validation and their support of the work we've done over the last fourteen years. So some have called this plan and this opportunity pivotal, others a watershed moment. I call it generational and transformational. And no matter what happens after tonight, I'm very grateful to have been part of it. So here we are. All the planning has been done. All the engineering, all the studies, all the analysis, all the reports have been done. You've heard from staff. You've heard from expert consultants. You've heard from us. Now is the time to hear from the public, which is a very critical and important part of this journey. And when that is complete, it will be in the hands of council. And I believe in this council to move forward and make a right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. You mentioned, you reflected back on thirty years ago, and it sometimes feels like it was yesterday, when it was actually Deer Ridge was the first density transfer we negotiated with you. And I would like to recognize and thank my colleague, former mayor Ron Wood, who I see here tonight, because he was sitting at this table when we made, back then, what was very difficult to table when we made, back then, what was very difficult decisions. And I know councillor Rod Day would love to be here tonight. I understand he can't be. But also, sitting at this table thirty years ago, was Steve Nichols, who was our superb planner, like Mr. Bailey. And Steve, it's great to see you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to a speaker's list. I assume we have a speaker's list.
Indeed, Mayor Sager, we do have a speaker's list. We have some more sheets by the front table if anyone needs to sign up. The first three names on our list are Patricia Bowles, John Moonen, and Andy Krosick.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Oh, excuse me. Just before we call on members of the, sorry, councillor Gambioli quite properly corrected me. Are there any questions of members of council at this time? Okay, sorry, Ms. Bowles?
Sorry, yes, I'm
Oh, sorry, you do have
I do.
Thank you, councillor Gambioli.
Otherwise, I wouldn't have asked, but yeah. So I'm not sure whether to ask this to our staff or the BPP representative. But so just a couple of questions around the affordable housing part, the slides. For some reason, my
Councillor Gambioli, can I get you just to speak a little
For some reason, my screen isn't working anymore. So I don't know, we don't have to bring it back up. But two sites, we, one of the slides showed two sites for affordable housing and the fact that BPP is going. Can we just explain that to the public a little bit better? And how is that going to be part of the process of the build-out of the village? I know that in the past, we haven't, we don't have a very good record of, with these big plans, you know, getting the affordable housing and rental done at the front end, and we just keep building high-end condos, and we don't get our rentals. So how have we mitigated that?
Sure. So through the mayor, great question, councillor Gambioli. The plan is that the district acquires the sites and puts the district and council very much in the driving seat in terms of providing that affordable housing. So council, and we don't have to wait till the end of the plan, and I know that's been a concern when other sort of larger developments have happened, that the more affordable housing happens at the end. In this situation, council is in complete control of that, can provide the housing, can work with a nonprofit provider. As a government, can work to help solicit funds from senior levels of government, BC Housing, the province, to help make that happen, and can set the terms really associated with that affordable housing. And we expect that that will occur in some of the early phases, if council chooses to do that as part of this development. So it's really first and foremost is part of the plan.
So really, it's up to us, it's up to our council to move that forward?
Through the mayor to councillor Gambioli. So the phased development agreement requires those two sites to be provided by certain milestones. And so the first site must be provided by the time that BPP gets a CV4 Form and Character Development Permit for any strata apartment units, or the date of occupancy of the seven hundred and fiftieth fee simple unit. And then the second site has to be provided by the time of, date of occupancy of the fifteenth hundred fee simple unit. So you will have those sites in a phased approach, and then the timing of which you proceed then to involve a nonprofit housing operator will be up to the district.
Okay. But knowing those timelines, we shouldn't delay, if that's the case. Okay. And just, you know, a couple of the maps that were shown, there's not much detail, of course. This is just a sort of a high-level plan in many respects. But a couple of them, you know, lead me to see that there's sort of roads going through different sections. And I want to be assured, or assure the community, that really, we're looking at areas within the development that are very pedestrian-friendly. Am I right? You talked about plazas, but you know, most of the diagrams sort of show the roads as opposed to the real core of the village.
Through the mayor to councillor Gambioli, there are significant public realm and non-motorized transportation amenities as part of this plan. Significant plazas, as you say, multi-use paths, fifty acres dedicated just to mountain biking, trails, all integrated into this plan and provide a key part of that. Pedestrian mobility is really a key part of this when you, when you're providing for the type of housing that we're providing in that close location. Being able to walk is really important, and we've thought very carefully, worked with our engineering department, worked with various public realm designers to design a place that's inviting to walk, inviting, inviting to bike, not only within the village itself, but then to be able to access the nature behind it, the park that will be coming. So I think that's a really key and pivotal part of this. And also connect farther to the east, to Rogers Creek, and to create those linkages to the eastern part of the Upper Lands and down to places eventually like Caulfield Shopping Centre.
Okay. And I guess my last question for now is, we heard a little bit about mitigating traffic impacts by having commercial and other services in the village core. What other ways are we trying to, you know, has this plan looked at mitigating traffic impacts? I'm thinking of public transit in particular.
Through the mayor, I mean, I don't think it can be understated, the power of being able to have retail, office, commercial space, schools, community centres close to where people live. We find that, you know, all the data shows that when you have that situation occurring, that vehicle trips are significantly reduced. And I appreciate that you appreciate that point. But, you know, as well to the, to the, all the multimodal stuff that I talked about, independent transit service is a key part of this plan. We have negotiated with the TransLink Board for British Pacific Properties to pay for a independent transit service that will take people from the village to Park Royal. And that, the frequency of that service is included in the phased development agreement and is part of the plan and is commensurate with the growth of the village. It's intended, it will start on day one, and it will grow as the village grows. Again, offsetting all those other, every transit trip starts and ends on your feet. So when people get to the village, they'll be able to walk comfortably, but they'll also be able to make other choices in the car in getting out of the village.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gambioli. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And now, any other questions? Councillor Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. And it's, it actually was prompted by councillor Gambioli's question on the affordable housing sites. You said that the first site would be available on the delivery of the seven hundred and fiftieth sort of fee simple unit. And in your presentation, you had estimated that there would be three hundred people living in Cypress Village in year five, and up to seventeen hundred people in year ten. So trying to combine those two figures and using those estimates, that would be somewhere between five and ten years that the first affordable housing site would be available, based on those estimates. Is that a reasonable assumption?
Through the mayor to councillor Lambert, that seems about right. I mean, it would be an estimate, of course.
Of course.
But sort of based on, you know, the approvals process and when, you know, building permits would likely be applied for and, you know, hopefully granted, that seems like a reasonable estimate.
So would we be able to advance that if we wanted to? Would we be able to, what flexibility do we have with that tenure on those, on those properties? I mean, could we, for example, utilize them as strata sites and use the revenue from that to purchase affordable housing sites elsewhere, say in Ambleside?
No. So the development entitlements, when those parcels are created, there'll be a covenant on title that'll limit the use to the affordable housing component. And so that's a hundred and eighty-four affordable housing components divided over the two sites. All, as all of the subdivided parcels get created, the development entitlements will be sprinkled out around Cypress Village. Right now, it's, you know, a big zone over all the lands that allows the thirty-seven hundred housing units and the housing mix. But each parcel will be given development entitlements as they're subdivided.
Okay, thank you. That leads to a related question about the works yard and the covenant on that. That's a pretty significant restraint on the district to be able to exercise development rights. Can you please tell us a little more about what exactly that covenant entails?
Sure. Through the mayor to councillor Lambert. My mic's on, yeah. So the works yard covenant, similar to how the PDA locks in the zoning and the servicing standards for BPP to give them security of their ability to achieve this development in the twenty-year timeframe of the PDA, the workforce housing and the non-market rental housing components that are limited to the works yard site is another form of helping to provide some security to BPP to be able to realize their development entitlements. The works yard site, as you know, has the operating works yard. It's going to have the new proposed fire station. It's got the firefighter training grounds, and it's going to have the relocated materials transfer facility. So there's not really room in terms of land area to add any housing over the twenty-year term of the PDA, likely in any case, unless you are adding rental housing above the new fire station. That would be allowed by this covenant. So this works yard covenant runs for the twenty-year term of the PDA and limits what the district can do in terms of residential to workforce housing and to, sorry, affordable rental housing.
Okay, thank you. That, that answers my question, and just unfortunately reinforces my concern about the district to be able to exercise its, its development rights in that particular area. I appreciate why you've done it, but I have difficulty with that. The, and a further question about the business park. Now, the business park was not part of the initial land value consideration, something that was a byproduct of the actual area development plan and the Westmount connector roadway. And the district is contributing money and land, but is not sharing in any way in the beneficial ownership of that, of that property.
So through the mayor to councillor Lambert, the district's not contributing money. It's just contributing the land, which would be transferred to BPP to form part of the development site for those lands.
Well, except that we're contributing two-point-eight million dollars for the transfer of the material site to the, to the work site. So it's not a cash contribution, but it is a contribution nonetheless.
Fair point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gambioli.
Sorry, I'm back. One more question I forgot to ask. So in this plan, what is our definition that we're using for affordable housing at this point, these days?
Through the mayor, councillor Gambioli, it's seventy percent of market rents for similar units, similar size, similar location.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Watt.
Is there a reason why the municipality is bound to put in the affordable housing versus a form of housing that would bring us greater returns?
Through the mayor.
Versus that, the equivalent of that housing being built by the BPPs and us conversely building something that is market rental?
Through the mayor, and just to clarify, I think that the last question was important about the value of the affordable housing. It's seventy percent of market. So, you know, when thinking about that, think about housing for folks like teachers, folks like police, firefighters, workforce housing is the level of affordability that I think we're looking at. And I know that's been very important to council. One of the key things that we heard during the consultation process was that that type of housing was available. So if you're having a complete community up there with things like restaurants, with folks who are working at Cypress, that folks like that have a place to live, if there's a school there, that teachers could live in that place. So it's a relatively small proportion of the housing that's being provided there. It's part of the terms of the business deal. At the, at our, at a previous meeting in an information session that I believe you were at, we had a nonprofit housing provider ask us, hey, why not more affordable housing? Why aren't we doing better here? And the response back was that, as part of the business terms, in order to get Eagle Ridge, we had to make trade-offs. And that was one of the key trade-offs. To provide the value of Eagle Ridge, we have less affordable housing than we might otherwise have.
Yeah. And I want to clarify, I'm not saying we shouldn't have the affordable housing. I'm simply questioning who puts it in. Couple of other questions. So the DCCs are fourteen-point-six-two million. When those are taken out, we're only going to have seventeen million left in our reserves. And I'm just curious, how long on average would it take to rebuild those DCCs? I know every year is different. Because it is roughly half of our reserves that will be going.
Through the mayor, that would very much depend on the speed of development. I think that I, I'll maybe look to Mr. Wallenberg. Are you aware of the pace of time that, no? Okay.
No, but
Sure. If you could maybe help address this. I'll maybe ask Mr. Wallenberg to come to the podium and address the DCC question.
It's important to keep in mind why you collect DCCs.
Of course.
You collect them to pay for capital projects that are required. So this is not a piggy bank that's meant to sit there earning interest and doing nothing. It's meant to be spent on the projects for which you collected it. So the allocation of this fourteen million dollars, you shouldn't think of it as somehow diminishing your savings account. It's spending money on projects which are the reason the money was collected. And once those, when those projects are done, then you don't need the reserve to pay for those projects, right? So if you need more money in your DCC reserves to pay for other projects that are not yet listed in your DCC capital expenditures bylaw, that's a good reason to revisit your DCC bylaw and rates and see why you might need additional funds.
Thank you. I mean, I do understand the basic premise behind it, but thank you. And CACs, the fire hall for fourteen million, now those, that fourteen million originally came from the British Pacific Properties, from the Rogers Creek development. And I'm just curious about that. Is a fire hall commonly built from CACs?
Through the mayor, fire halls are often paid for through CACs as capital contributions. A fire hall has been deemed to be necessary in this area, not only for Cypress Village, but it's a, it's a real, it's a gap in our existing systems, given the size of the municipality. We've worked with our fire chief through a number of studies and identified this as a gap, not only for Cypress Village, but for a number of existing residents above and below the highway. So it's a, it's a key piece of infrastructure that's required, and CAC is an appropriate tool to, to help fund it. And it was contemplated specifically by council as part of the Rogers Creek phased development agreement.
So regardless of Cypress Village, that fire hall would have to be built?
The fire department has often, has repeatedly said that there is a need for an additional fire hall. This provides us an opportunity to help fund that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Well, in principle, I don't necessarily object to this project. But my job as a councillor is to, the fiduciary responsibility that I have to this community, and to make sure that West Vancouver actually is getting the best deal for what it is giving up. And we're giving up a lot in my assessment, both in the immediate and in the future quality of life for this community. So number one, I've always had an issue with McGavin Field. Now, I was not politically involved when McGavin Field came into the hands of the district. And my very naive understanding was that McGavin Field was given to us in return for, question mark, which I'd like to have the answer for everyone, and that essentially it was our land to do as what we wished. And through the years, I've had various conversations with individuals in politics, and wouldn't it be a wonderful location for West Vancouver, given the gorgeous sighting of that piece of property? For West Vancouver to put a hotel up there, that we could lease the land, and we could come into a financial arrangement with whomever would run that property, fabulous restaurant, you get the general idea, which would also contribute to the quality of what is happening in Cypress Village. And lo and behold, I find this isn't an untethered piece of property in the hands of West Vancouver. In fact, British Pacific Property intends to put a school on an inordinately valuable piece of land, number one. And then beside that, they're going to have a sports field. So I want to know, if you'd let the public know how we acquired that land and how we got to such a deal that gave British Pacific Properties, in essence, the terms of what was going to be used with the land.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
So through the mayor, McGavin Field was acquired, and I believe the mayor referenced this a little bit earlier this evening, as part of a density transfer associated with Deer Ridge. So that's, that's how it came into our acquisition. Now, it wasn't acquired free and clear. It was acquired as a field. That's, there's a covenant on it that is required to be a field, and BPP is named on that covenant. In terms of the school, through, through careful planning and through our analysis, In terms of the school, through careful planning and through our analysis, there is provision for a school site, obviously, when you're going to have a complete compact community, a school is a key piece. And the idea is to link the school and other civic facilities to, together, in an efficient, business efficient, and in a way that takes sort of opportunities of symbiosis between the various things, where it's the school, the community center, and the field. That was consulted on significantly during the planning process. That was seen as sort of the optimal place for those things and is, it constitutes a key component of the plan. That said, we did look at other options for locating schools, for locating other facilities. And quite frankly, given sort of the need to have a school next to a field, next to a community center, in a place that's become, I think, a public jewel, you know, folks go up to that area and love and appreciate McGavin Field and that outlook, that became the optimal place and hence its recommendation in the plan. In terms of just simply putting a hotel on that field, that's also really problematic. We're not confident of the geotech associated with that for sort of underground parking, all those types of things on the immediate school site. So, you know, that's, though there are limitations to that, that would be, would require further expense to our dime if we were to further those initiatives, hence our recommendation in terms of its location.
Okay. Well, my issue has always been that the terms were dictated by British Pacific Properties. The decision was made that West Vancouver, when you get this for giving us that, we're going to tell you, you must have a sports field. So a number of issues to do with this is I have concerns that a lot of what we are getting, the terms are being dictated to the advantage of British Pacific Properties and not to the advantage of West Vancouver residents. That's my feeling on the subject. Could you please allay my fears or add to them?
Well, and through the mayor to councillor Cassidy, I think that it's important to recognize that the, you know, not just calling it a sports field, it's for public use, for multiple uses. And that's key, that there's multiple users who can access and use that field. But that it wasn't just the BPP that was dictating those terms back when the deal was made. The district agreed to it. They went through a careful analysis, a careful conversation, and it was an agreement between the district and British Pacific Properties. It wasn't BPP dictating terms and the district being forced into accepting them. It was a careful consideration at the time by council, made to recognize the public interest of that acquisition while providing for a housing option in what you now see as sort of Deer Ridge and Stonecliff.
I think councillor Cassidy, we have former mayor Ron Wood and Steve Nichols, who were at this table when we negotiated for that field, something I personally am particularly proud of, and perhaps they'll add some history to that if they feel inclined.
Everybody's time here. I don't want to belabor the point. I think my point has been made. Thank you. And lastly, when we got the money for Rogers Creek, the $13 million, it came with no attachments to it. We could have spent that money anywhere we wanted to do. We could use that money to complete the enhanced West Vancouver Community Centre, which an inordinate amount of time and energy and so forth has gone into, which also the thought was that we'd also be putting more housing above our new community centre. And yet, we're being required to fund a fire station that wouldn't be needed if we didn't have a Cypress Village. So why are we paying for the fire station that actually is going to put out the fires in the village that they are creating? Should they not be paying for their own fire station?
So through the mayor, when the phase development agreement was approved and council approved it, and I believe unanimously approved it, there were a number of items that were identified as being recipients of the funding of the CAC for Rogers Creek, and a fire hall was certainly one of them. Council does have discretion in that. But in allocating CACs, you know, remember the principles that are set out in doing so around proportionality and nexus. And so when you take money from an area like Rogers Creek, providing a fire hall in an area that serves it is a really important piece of the allocation of that amenity contribution. Again, this is a recommendation of staff that the fire hall be funded from, the CACs from Rogers Creek for which it was intended, but council has the discretion in terms of making that decision. And I know that council did actually, at the previous meeting, allocate that money to the amenity reserve fund, the $13 million. But the principle behind it is that the money was provided by British Pacific Properties as part of Rogers Creek. It serves not only Rogers Creek and British Pacific Properties, but other residents in and around that area, for not just fire hall, but for emergency services, for first responders, for various other issues, including, and we've talked to the fire chief about this, I mean, there is the opportunity to expand some of the emergency services in that moving forward so that, again, for potentially in the future for paramedics, for North Shore search and rescue, it's a community asset, not just something that's, you know, for the village only.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Councillor Watt? And I would just encourage members of council, this is the night to listen to the public and not to debate the.
I'll just be very brief.
Importantly, tonight is also the end of the time that we can be speaking to staff should we have any further questions or addressing the public with any further questions. So while we may wish to race in to hear what the public has to say, and I most definitely do, it is also the time for us to ask any questions that we might have in a public forum. And so it behooves us to do so.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Watt?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I'm just looking in here. So in addition to the local network of sanitary sewer infrastructure to be constructed, blah, 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 there will be some upgrades and upsizing required of the district's existing sanitary sewer infrastructure. Who pays for that? Is that us or BPPs?
British Pacific Properties pays for the, I just wanted to double check, the sanitary sewer.
So the upgrades as well? Okay. And one final question, apologies, back to McGavin Field. So it's a million dollars coming from the BPPs toward McGavin?
Correct. The million dollars was previously provided and it's being allocated to McGavin Field.
And so, given the cost of Place for Sport, that million should?
Sorry, plus another million dollars, right? So it's the double, sorry.
And that will be adequate? We're not going to be on the hook for significantly more like the Place for Sport?
Through the mayor, I believe last night it was very pleasantly announced that we were on time and under budget. So, you know, due to the careful stewardship of Ms. Kettler and her team, we're confident that we can build it adequate and a great facility up there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy.
So councillor Watt's question actually stimulated another question from me. Given the inordinate cost of the wastewater treatment plant and that we are going to be billing individual households and the individual households that are going to be built in Cypress Village are going to be depositing into our wastewater treatment plant, should we also not be calculating the costs of those households now to contribute towards that project?
Mr. Roll.
Sure, for the sewer utility, and Ms. Muller can, you know, potentially elaborate on this, but I think that that's, your suggestion is reasonable and I think that's something that we should be looking at. So I don't know if there's anything more to it.
Ms. Muller?
Through the mayor.
This is our director of engineering, for those of you who don't know her. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Through the mayor to councillor Cassidy. So the utility does recover a levy, it's a flow-through to Metro Vancouver. And it's true that Metro Vancouver is anticipating increased costs associated with the construction of the Lions Gate wastewater treatment plant. And we, staff are currently looking at funding mechanisms to address the unanticipated increases in costs that'll go towards that capital investment. Certainly, one way of funding it would be, as we do now, through the rate. So it's a pay-as-you-go sort of principle. So all the costs incurred in any given year are collected in that year. And so I guess to answer your question, when and if the development and those homes in Cypress Village were to come online, they would then be paying for their sort of cost or contribution to connecting to that system. And I think it would be difficult at this point in time to collect, like, when they come online, they'll be covering their portion of the costs of the construction of the Lions Gate treatment plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for members of council? Thanks very much. Let's now turn to the public. And our first speaker is Patricia Bowles, if I've got that right. Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. And sorry, you've been standing there for a bit.
It's all right. I was able to give my chair to somebody who needed it more than I did. Good evening. My name is Patricia Bowles. I live right across the street, 747 17th Street in Ambleside. And I'm here tonight to support BPP's Cypress Village. My professional career of over 45 years was in communications, corporate, consulting, government roles, provincial and federal, that involved a lot of projects that required a lot of public consultation. In my opinion, BPPs and together with the municipality has met the gold standard of public consultation. I have never seen anything like this in my entire professional career. We moved to West Vancouver in 2014 and had a heck of a time finding a place to live where we could walk to services, get all the amenities that we wanted. It took us three years to find something that we could afford that met that criteria. I was invited to participate in yet another phase of public consultation for Cypress Village at that time, and they listened and adjusted and changed their plans. They decided, together with the municipal staff, to do more with less, and they, I can't believe did this, contributed 262 acres of protected land at Eagle Ridge. I think this is hugely significant and a great gift to the community. In the new village, you'll be able to walk to the services, access public transportation. It'll have a community centre, a school, a field, a fire station which will benefit many more people than Cypress Village. Just think of North Shore Rescue, if any of you have been watching those shows. Grocery shopping, other amenities that will be provided through services and partnerships throughout our community. They're going to improve transportation access in the entire area. And finally, they're going to provide, they're going to provide mixed housing options which will benefit everybody. It is truly an outstanding example of listening and changing plans. They took their time to adjust over and over to meet our community needs and values. A lot of projects that I've been involved with don't do this. They don't have the patience or the capacity to wait and determine the best model for everyone. But thankfully, British Properties with the leadership of Jeff Crowell and his able lieutenant, Bryce Tupper, together with municipal staff, have done this. And given all the challenges that we now face with climate change, transportation, and trying to keep this community populated with people of all ages and stages, we're lucky to have this exciting and well-planned village to bring new life and wilderness protection to West Vancouver. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is John. The next speaker is John Moonen, followed by Andy Krosick.
Thank you. Mr. Moonen, good to see you this evening.
Mr. Sager.
Mr. Moonen. We've known each other our whole lives. What can I say?
You don't want me to start off on that?
No, we don't.
My name is John Moonen. I live at 5330 Monteverde Place in West Vancouver. I am not here on behalf of anybody.
Mr. Moonen, can I just get you to move the microphone down to your? Thanks very much.
I'm not here on behalf of any organization, nobody but myself. My interest is not just the general one that all people in West Vancouver have as taxpayers and voters and residents in the future of these properties, but I'm also a neighbour. I grew up only a few hundred meters from the village site. My mom still lives in the same house. I've trespassed all over BPP's properties over the last few decades as a hiker and a walker and going for picnics, driving by. I live in Caulfield. I shop in Caulfield Village. And like many people here, I will be using the two exits that are the most, the key exits to this property. So I believe my interests are indeed affected by this. And I love this project. I really want it to happen. Now, why? I think perhaps not this council, but previous councillors, councils have, I think, dropped the ball on one aspect of their responsibilities. In general, they've worked to create the best municipality to live in in Canada. But where they have dropped the ball, and hopefully you're picking it up, is on housing variety, diversity. For 100 years, we created single-family homes and high-rise apartments. Anybody that was, whose family was evolving, kids looking for a place to live, aging, looking for something smaller, has had to, by and large, move elsewhere. And I think BPP, as a developer, has done a great job with single-family homes and apartments, or high-rises. But it's going to do an even better job, I think, by providing the diversity that we need, not just to attract a diverse population, but to keep the people that are here. And so I love the idea of townhouses, below-market housing, rental units, all different sizes, probably all different price points. In short, they're going to go a long way to providing the variety that we have not provided as a community over the last 50, 100 years. And I think that variety is crucial to keeping West Vancouver the best place in Canada to live. So I would ask that you put me down as a very strong supporter of the plans. I support the proposed bylaws that you're considering. I support the legal agreements that you are considering. And I'd just like to quote something from your own 2024-2025 strategic plan. Part of your vision, you've said, and I think you're acting on, is that you want to attract and inspire a full spectrum of people to live, play, and work in West Van. And I think this project goes a long way to meeting that aspiration. And I just wanted you to know, I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moonen. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andy Krosick, followed by Kevin Webb.
Mr. Krosick, good to see you this evening. Two nights in a row, sir.
Two nights in a row, aren't you lucky?
We are.
So mayor and council, nice to see you. And by the way, the score was 2-1. That's all we'll say.
Yeah. You saw after we went home last night.
Not going to say which way it went.
Oh, yes, sorry. Councillor Snyder had a comment we should have made at the beginning.
Just because you brought it up, thank you for bringing it up. And by the way, I do want to just make, and this is not going to score into your time.
I'm looking at the clock.
I promise you, you're not going to lose your time. I appreciate that Edmonton didn't win, and I'm sorry for you. But I do think that we need to recognize as a community that a West Vancouver kid scored the goal-winning game in game seven of the Stanley Cup, Reinhardt, Sam Reinhardt. So I think it's worthy that West Vancouver kid, born and raised here, scored that game-winning goal. So let's recognize that.
And yesterday was councillor Snyder's birthday and.
Okay, enough, enough.
Okay, okay. He also knows the young man, so there we go.
There you go. Well, that's a West Vancouver, right? Doing things for others. All right. So I'm here, once again, in my capacity as a former working group chair. Yesterday, I wanted to speak to you as a chair of the Dialogue on Housing, that hopefully started a big conversation around diversity of housing that Mr. Moonie just referenced. And in 2012, I was asked, together with Ashley Willard-Baumann, to be co-chair of the Upper Lands Working Group that has been referenced. And specifically, it is that Upper Lands Working Group that started the whole process that has led to, I'd like to think, related to the specific density transfer that we're talking about tonight. So I just wanted to, again, in my sort of history of being a history teacher, just provide a little bit of history around that. We did get convened, and our specific charge was as follows: to assess the physical characteristics of the upper lands, to determine how these lands are presently being used, to review the existing. to review the existing policies and regulatory context, and specifically to engage stakeholders, that's us, the community, in a discussion about the future of these lands. We did that. Three things we found out. Number one, no surprise, how much the community loved the lands. Thank you. Number two, how much they think that those lands and anything that happens on it should provide benefit to everyone in the community. And third, for us to get the best possible value for it. And over two years, we then delivered a working group report that the council of the time received and put into, much of it, into the 2018 official community plan. And specific to what we recommended, we recommended a number of things, including that there would be no residential development above the twelve-hundred-foot level. And let me tell you, the number of times, and Alan Barsley, who was with me on the committee, will attest, I'm not sure of any other members, how many times we heard about twelve-hundred-foot, twelve-hundred-foot, and the love for it. And we wanted to enshrine that. We secondly talked about the future neighbourhoods that would occur, that could occur, that would be a part of that, of those lands. And to do that came the concept of a density transfer, to allow, and Mayor Sager has referenced the previous example, but to allow a portion... At the end of the day, the development rights belong to British Pacific Properties for all of those lands. And so the only way that we could get some of that protected without housing is to establish that density transfer procedure. And it is that recommendation that we brought here. It is that recommendation that then, at the time that we did it, we had some discussions with Mr. Crowell and the British Pacific Properties. And I think Mr. Crowell will say that they were ongoing discussions that we had for a little bit in terms of understanding exactly how that's going to get done. But it did get done, and it was placed into the OCP. And now, about nine years later, we're finally seeing the fruition of that. And that is very exciting, because what you've got is you've got two things. You've got a village that will provide the necessary amenities and the necessary living, and you've got a protection of a land that, as already been said, a hundred years from now, people will wonder, how the heck did they ever do that? I'll make one final point I wanted to make, and that is around how we get to negotiate all of that. I have been on both sides of collective agreements. I have negotiated for teachers, I've negotiated for school boards with associated staff. You never walk away, and no one will ever tell you, when they walk away from the bargaining table, that they got everything. And they always sort of wonder, what did we leave? But the point is that only the people at the table know why it is that the result is what it is. And unless you're at the table, you have to give faith to those that were at the table and have come up with this result. I have that faith. I have that belief that what you've got in front of you is about as good as you're going to get. It takes a village to build a village. Get on to building it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Krosick.
Kevin Webb, followed by Sandy Trigus, perhaps?
Sorry, the next speaker is...
Kevin Webb.
Mr. Webb, thank you for joining us this evening. I don't think you've ever heard you call me Mr. before. I know, that's a bit odd, isn't it? Sorry, sir. First off, I'd like to say I echo the sentiment of the speakers that have appeared here prior to myself. I'd like to thank Mayor Sager and council for giving me this opportunity. I am an enthusiastic supporter, and I'm honoured to be here in support of this dynamic proposal. I'm a long-time West Van resident, five-seven-six-three Primo Space, West Vancouver. And maybe residence is the wrong word, delinquent might be better. A mountain biker, avid skier, and I also own a medium-sized heavy construction company and employ numerous people here. And most of our employees unfortunately have to live in Squamish and commute down. We do not have a lot of people commuting across the bridge. We're looking forward to the opportunity, as council or staff presented, that not only teachers and firemen will have the opportunity to live here, my staff may have the opportunity to live here in the future. So I think, you know, all in all, I'm obviously in favour. I'm honoured to be here and excited to support British properties, and you could not ask for a better tenant, landlord, whatever, custodian of the lands that are out there than the partners you have in this development. So...
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mr. Webb, I'm sorry. Councillor Thompson has a question, just to put you in the hot seat, sir.
I don't have a question, actually, but I do have a message to relay to you. A couple of weeks ago, we, and I thought this is a good place to do it, a couple of weeks ago, we had our community awards, and we honoured a fellow who's taken it upon himself to clean our highways. And he didn't, he was a little too humble to come and get his award, but he did ask that we pass on a great pile of thanks to you, because you took it upon yourself to stop, give him a safety vest, and supply him with bags. So thank you.
Thank you. It's the least I can do for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Sandy Trigus. I believe it's Trigus. I apologise.
Mr. Trigus, thanks for joining us this evening.
Followed by Heidi Inman.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council, thanks for listening to me tonight. My name's Sandy Trigus. I'm a long-term West Vancouver resident. I feel blessed to call this community my home. I'm a long-term volunteer, coach, avid outdoors person. And I had a bit of a moment last year. It was actually with the Eagle Ridge Fire. And for those of you who know me, I'm with a company that provided the aerial firefighting services that flew in and knocked down that fire. And I got calls from my friends at Cypress Mountain and asking about the status of things. And I just had a moment sort of really realising what we have with the whole Eagle Bluffs area, Eagle Ridge and the upper levels there. It's absolutely fantastic. It truly is fantastic. The access that we have, the ability to recreate out there, and put all that together, it really, really is special. I mean, my previous role, I was a sponsor of a number of award-winning sustainable business, development projects with mountain equipment, co-op, some on the North Shore and twenty-four other locations across Canada. So I'm deeply sort of aware of what sustainable development looks like, vertical buildings, compact communities, and so on. The one thing I know from, you know, from all the way from Victoria to Halifax, in terms of the developments that we've done and the various municipalities that we dealt with, there's always pragmatism, compromise, and, you know, solutioning that comes forward. So seeing what I see here, I really think that this is the best of everything put together, the compromise is reached, and I speak out strongly in favour of this project going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trigus. Thanks for joining us.
The next speaker is Heidi Inman, followed by Diana Sonderhoff.
Ms. Inman, it's nice to see you this evening.
Nice to see you.
You know, years ago, it was your husband that came every Monday night.
No, my brother.
Your brother, your brother. Sorry.
That's okay. He's been called my husband in the past.
There you go.
I don't know how much he likes that, though, Mark.
He used to come every Monday night.
Oh, boy. Anyway, well, I have lived my entire life in the British properties. I have gone to Westcott, I have gone to Sentinel. I have hiked every trail in the upper lands here with my Labradors over the years. Some have been trails, and some of them haven't been trails, with Labradors that love to take off. So with the Eagle Ridge, preserving Eagle Ridge is a huge thing for me. It's wonderful. Now, as far as British Pacific Properties go, in my eyes, they're first class. I've gone to workshops to put my two bits in of what Cypress Village should look like, what it should include. A small hospital or something like they have up at Whistler would sort of be a nice addition, might be hopeful thinking, but it's just something. But I am so for this project and the housing they've put together to provide, and just the village, the amenities. I just think this is a, when British Pacific Properties does something, they do it right. They have worked on this project for a lot of years. I've gone to the slide shows. I've gone, like I said, the workshops. It's just, it's a new generation moving forward. And like I say, I am president of the British Properties Homeowner Association. I am speaking on behalf of myself tonight. But I'm trying to get our board moving in, the new generation, getting younger people on the board to head into this new phase. And that's what British Pacific Properties is doing. They're moving in to the new phase, the younger generation. And it's, to me, I want a green light on this. I want to move ahead. I want to be able to see some of this development. So to me, let's get going.
Thank you, Ms. Inman. Do say hello to your brother for me.
Diana Sonderhoff, followed by Jim McLean.
Thank you. It's Ms. Sonderhoff?
Sonderhoff.
Sonderhoff. Hello, Ms. Sonderhoff. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Everybody seems to have said most of the things that I wanted to say. I really like this project. I believe, I should start with that I have been a resident of British Properties since nineteen sixty-five, a long time. And when I saw this project, I thought, this is just wonderful. A community needs a heart, and it's providing a heart. And we really don't have that sort of a community asset above the highway. So I think it's absolutely needed. I love the diversity of housing which is being offered. It's exactly what we need. And the government has been calling for a certain amount of housing to be built. This provides it. It provides so many things. And the high-rises are in just the right place, because they will not impede on anybody's view. So I just support this project.
Thanks so much.
And I really hope that it will go ahead, because when you delay things, it puts the cost up, and we don't need that. So hurry up, produce it. It's a wonderful plan.
Thank you for joining us.
Jim McLean, followed by, I think it says Karina Eris.
Well, Mr. McLean, nice to have you back in this chamber. It's been a long time.
Been a long time. Thanks. For anyone who doesn't know me, I used to be the president of British Pacific Properties. I retired at sixty-five, twelve years ago.
Seems like yesterday.
Yeah. But I'm not, I'm not here to talk about company business. That wouldn't be fair. The younger team has done a better job than we did. But I live in Whitby Estates. I live 2430 Hudson Court, which is near Chippendale and Folkestone. So I'm an affected resident since Chippendale now connects to Cypressville Road. But even more importantly, you have the mountain path, the secret path that a lot of people don't know about, that's about half-built now, that connects from Chippendale Road, near where I live, all the way through to this new village. Now, it's only half-built today, unfortunately. But I walk that every day, and I cycle it when the weather is good. It's lit, it's paved, and it connects the Whitby Estates community. And that's really important. I first moved to British Properties in nineteen seventy-nine, and at the time, I was developing a project called Westminster Key in New Westminster. And we did a lot of modern planning those many years ago. That's a complete community. It's all built, of course. About five thousand people live there. And it has its own heart and soul. It has a commercial centre, and of course, Columbia Street's been redone there. Won't go into that. But as the previous speaker said, above the highway, we had very few community amenities. Okay? We have no community centre. We have some playing fields, mostly with schools. But this thing will provide, this Cypress Village will provide a heart and soul to the community above the highway, and it'll bring it into the modern world. So of course, I totally support it. And thank you for your time.
Thanks for joining us this evening. Thank you. Hello.
I was your neighbour many years ago, Mark.
Yes, you were. Nice to see you again.
So my name is Karina Eris. Many of you probably know me. My husband and I have, I've lived here all my life. My husband and I have raised our three children here at our home at Twenty-seventh and Palmerston, and we've been very involved in the community for many years. I'm here to provide my support to British Properties. There are many positive attributes that have been mentioned about Cypress Village Plan, as you've heard from some extremely well-spoken people, and I'm not even going to go there. I want to focus on the protection and preservation of the two hundred and sixty-two acres at Eagle Ridge and the hundred acres in Cypress Village. Many of you probably even knew my mother, who was an adamant, an avid hiker. We already hiked all these hills before anybody else did. Mark will remember her. I hiked them with her. My kids have hiked them, and now my children and grandchildren are hiking them. So we're very much in support of this project. Why I really wanted to come today, though, was to support the British Properties. I find the engagement by Geoff Crowell and Bryce Tupper has been incredible. Bryce already contacted our group probably when this project started, maybe ten years ago. I hike with a group of women every week, and we have since our kids were in preschool. He came to coffee with us. He joined us on several of our walks. He wanted to see what we wanted to see stay. So not just some gravel path with a bit of grass on the side, which many developments in, on the North Shore, as you see, that's their nature. Bryce understood that we wanted to see those old growth trees stay there, that we wanted those green ferns that grow about this high when you're walking at this time of year, somewhere where you can run the dogs and have that still there for our own kids. So I wrote down a lot of things I was going to say, but I'm not going to say them all now. I just want to say I'm very much in support of this project. I think the BPPs deserve that this project goes through now, and I hope that each one of you councillors takes that seriously, because it is something that will be there for the community and for many years to come.
Thanks so much. Very nice to see you this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. I'm afraid I'm having a hard time reading the next name. It might be Ken Hamish, or Ken Harrison, or I'm pretty sure there's an H at the beginning of the last name.
No, it's Karen. No.
It's my terrible handwriting.
Karen. Apologies, Karen.
We certainly know Karen. It's good to see you this evening.
Hello, hello.
You are getting a name change there.
Well, you know, my husband was a doctor, and he had perfect handwriting. I didn't. Mayor and council, many of you know me, if not all of you, you know that I'm very involved and have been for years with Rotary Club of West Vancouver Sunrise. And, sorry, I've got some notes here. I'll just get them up here. Now, I've been, I live in Horshaby now and have been for about twenty years living there. I used to live at the top of Cypress Park Estates when it wasn't developed in the back. And I can't tell you how much I love living in a village, which is similar in some of the amenities that the Cypress Village will have. As you get older, it's even more important to be able to walk out and not have to drive everywhere. The other thing is I raise my kids here, and my grandkids are here in West Van, and we've, you know, we really believe in this project, all of us. I'd like to support it in many different ways, because I think that it's such a well-balanced, thought-out plan. And we've heard so many people praise British Pacific Properties. To me, they are the best community company, or a company that just contributes so much. And they've been a wonderful support to our club and all of our endeavours and so on. So the other thing I liked about it is, as a So the other thing I liked about it is, as a senior who recently, well, no, about six years ago downsized, there just aren't many options around. And I always say to Jeff, gee, I hope I'm still alive when you cut that ribbon on this project. In fact, I would love to move there, but I don't know if that's in my future. But I'm just so excited about it because, like many speakers here, it offers more choice, and we just need to offer more. I know that my grandkids won't be able to live in West Vancouver presently because, and they're, you know, in their late teens and twenties and so on. And I think this offers an opportunity, though, for people coming behind them to actually live in the most wonderful place in the whole world. So I would give complete support, and I think it would be a terrible shame if this project doesn't move forward, so.
Thanks very much. Thanks for joining us this evening, and also thanks for all your work with the Rotary.
Thanks, and I'll try to improve my writing and my name.
Ma'am, for the record of the hearing, could I get your last name? I'm sorry. Your last name?
Harrison.
Harrison, thank you. The next, my record is not going to get any better here. The next speaker is Alan Ban, perhaps?
No, Vardsley.
There's, that's not Vardsley.
No, wait, no.
No, no, that's not Vardsley.
Don't argue, gentlemen. Come on up, sir.
No. Okay. It's not Mr. Vardsley. Mr. Vardsley is on the list. This is someone else, but, okay.
Sorry, sir. Could we get your last name? We...
Barr, B-A-R-R.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Barr. Thank you for joining us.
Mayor Sager and council. It appears, can everybody hear me?
It appears that I'm the stranger in the crowd tonight because it seems like everybody knows council and has had some involvement.
It's a small community.
I have a little bit on the outside, so, and what I'm going to say tonight, I think, is quite repetitive because it appears that we are, as a group tonight, one hundred percent in favor of what British Properties is bringing to West Vancouver. And I should say there should, there should be no question that it can approve. But I've made some notes here, so if you can bear with me, I'd like to read them to you. I reside in Deer Ridge, a thirty-plus-year-old, seventy-six-owner Stratford development just off of Cypress Bowl Road. When moving there some twenty years ago, it was a very quiet, remote area with nothing but a few skiers coming and going and the early stages of Mulgrave School. There have been slow changes over the years. Along came Stone Cliff, as well, an increase in visitors due to increased skier and recreational activities. Then the arrival of the pop-up Shred Restaurant and the very popular Trestle Bridge, which attracted people from all over the North Shore and beyond, but also offered immediate neighbor, a hint of what we could expect with new walkable amenities in the village. What is being presented tonight for the Cypress and Eagle Ridge uplands is not just a subtle change, but a major shift in how our community will function. In our picture, in our opinion, a welcome shift. The Upper Lands are very remote from the West Vancouver commercial hub. We have long-awaited commercial services to the Upper Lands, which will save us and our neighbors from getting to our cars all the time. Therefore, it makes sense to support this economic area development plan so British Pacific Properties can continue to move forward, providing some unique, special, and very much needed for the future in the Upper Lands community, all while protecting large swaths of green space for everyone to enjoy. I've been somewhat involved over the last number of years with the progress that British Property has been making. It has been slow, steady, and during that time, they have continued to keep the community aware and involved. For me, there has been no hidden agenda, unauthorized changes to the original vision. They have been a good neighbor, and we have confidence in them delivering a first-class village in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Thank you. Ms. Dallas, the next speaker.
Next, we have Teresa Rains.
Thank you. Teresa Rains.
Teresa West.
Yes, thank you. Please join us. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Your worship councillors, I did participate in the information meeting with Nicole and Mr. Bailey in council chambers recently. Thank you. Since I cannot prevent this development from going forward, I would like to add some opinions towards making the project more sustainable, which in my opinion is a term that everyone uses and as such has lost its significance. And I should preface my remarks by asking, as we look forward, that we see it with a more objective eye and not with the attitude that what is good for the developer is good for us all and that we should not interfere with these plans. This is a corporation, and they have stakeholders, I assume, shareholders, and a bottom line. According to the plan, only thirty percent of the natural area will be retained, and that thirty percent includes, for instance, sports fields, grassy boulevards, et cetera. I'm also aware that wetlands will be covered in and/or relocated, even though an expert with whom I spoke said that this cannot actually be successfully done. These wetland areas are usually flat, so building there is much easier than on slopes. So that is a cause for concern. And because I'm the co-chair of the Urban Tree Alliance, I would like to reference trees. Many will be removed, and I think by all accounts, these will have a hydraulic impact, particularly in areas below the highway. Countless evergreen trees that cover this area will be removed for this development. According to research, the rain intercepted by evergreen trees is more than twice the amount of deciduous trees, something to bear in mind when decisions are eventually made in implementing the urban forest managing plan, which will be soon, I assume. And of course, a reminder that large rainfall events occur usually during times when deciduous trees have lost their leaves. So much of that stormwater will run off. Are we secure in accepting how this plan has taken this into consideration? Are there plans for water detention? Is the stormwater runoff going to be retained on site, or are we pinning our hopes on the Five Creek projects to keep those of us below the highway safe from floods where the trees have been removed and only thirty percent, quote-unquote, "natural area" remains? And finally, I read in the report that the area in Eagle Ridge to be reserved through the density transferred is designated for limited use, designated for recreation and conservation and community use. Can someone tell me what this use might be?
The plan is to designate that as park.
The devil is in the details, isn't it? So we're not going to put a hotel or a convention center?
No, it's, it's to be designated as natural park.
It will be truly restricted to recreation activities like walking, hiking, biking, enjoying nature, and keeping the forest for us all?
Yes.
Do we confirm that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We, Mr. Bailey, as, as I, as members of council know, but the public may not, the enormous amount of work that has gone into the stormwater management plan for this, is that something you want to touch on, or we could do it at the end as well?
Sure. I mean, through the mayor, there, there has been considerable analysis of the stormwater. There are multiple strategies that will be implemented as part of the stormwater retention and diversion. And, you know, it's, it's all available in the council report. There's requirements for additional hydrological analysis as, as projects go forward. Water will be retained on site wherever possible, and we, we will also take advantage of our investment in the, the western leg of the Five Creek diversion.
Thank you. The next speaker.
The next speaker is James Nadell.
Thank you.
Followed by Matt Davies.
Thanks for joining us, sir.
Good evening, good worship and council. My name is James Nadell. I'm a North Vancouver resident. In my professional life, I'm a criminal lawyer, predominantly a federal prosecutor. But I appear before you this evening as the president of the North Shore Mountain Bike Association, which I have been since two thousand and twenty-one. The NSMBA was established in nineteen ninety-seven. We are a volunteer-driven, nonprofit organization dedicated to caring for a sustainable trail network for mountain bikers and other trail users. Presently, we have around three thousand three hundred and seventy members, and we represent the interests of many thousand others who are not yet members but spend their free time on Cypress, Frome, and Seymour. We work with every land manager across all three North Shore mountain, pardon me, mountains. Mountain biking is a truly global sport with multiple disciplines, professional organizations, and international competitions. This sport, however, started right here on the shore in the early nineteen eighties, and the steep rugged slopes of Cypress provide some of the best biking terrain in the world. Despite the sport's origin and heritage in this very place, land managers have historically been reticent to proactively engage in trail construction and maintenance. In the mid-two thousands, feasibility studies were conducted and reports drafted by this municipality, acknowledging that the increasing number of competitive and recreational bikers in West Vancouver needed a place to ride, and in fact, a mountain bike park was proposed on the north face of Black Mountain, offering chairlift access. Obviously, no such bike park presently exists. The District of West Vancouver officially recognized over twenty years ago that municipal resources and support for mountain biking on Cypress, even then, were insufficient to manage what they knew at that time to be an important, growing means of community recreation. And notwithstanding this inertia or outright opposition, government bureaucracy, dedicated volunteer efforts of local trail builders have maintained these trails that provide a place for your kids to recreate and a training ground for not just new generations of riders, but the literally best mountain bikers in the world. Fortunately, in the recent years, the NSMBA has developed a very good working relationship with staff at the District of West Vancouver, and with a great deal of persistent effort, we have managed to officially sanction a handful of these historic trails on the east side of Cypress, and we are in the process of building a new multi-use trail that will benefit hikers and trail runners and other community members and mountain bikers alike. Turning to the extent area development plan, the alternative to adopting this plan is not the status quo where the present state of the lands remains as it is. Development will happen with or without the participation of council and stakeholders. Take, for example, the Cypress Trails themselves, which have been developed and maintained for decades without land manager involvement despite previously acknowledged need. Times fortunately are changing, and the District of West Vancouver staff and the British Pacific Properties have spent years preparing the ADP before you now, and much to their credit, they have consulted with the NSMBA and other recreational organizations numerous times during the multiple planning phases. The NSMBA is also very appreciative that the British Pacific Properties invited us to the table from the outset, and we have been able to offer them our input along the way. It can be very challenging to be heard during times of large-scale processes such as this one, and our association is grateful for the working relationship that we've established with the BPP and the District of West Vancouver. As proponents of mountain biking and stewards of the local trail networks, our goal is to ensure the protection of these historic trails in Cypress. People want to live here because the best, pardon me, the best mountain biking in the world is in their back forty. We have been reassured by the District of West Vancouver that if the ADP is approved, the district will lead the development of the mountain bike trails in the approved zones and partner with us, and they will continue to work with us to maintain the pre-existing trails. District staff have advised that they are ready to start discussions as soon as the proposed bylaws are approved and the NSMBA is ready and waiting. It is apparent through the various planning and information sessions that the District of West Vancouver staff have done a substantial amount of work negotiating business terms with the BPP and drafting the proposed bylaws and their predicate legal agreements. The NSMBA commends them to you and advises you to approve them. I thank you for your audience this evening.
Thanks very much, sir.
Matt Davies, followed by Jason Kittler.
Probably not a triple bravo.
Mr. Davies, thanks for joining us this evening.
Council, your worship, municipal staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Matt Davies. I'm the president and general manager of Cypress Mountain and West Vancouver resident at five-one-five-three Ashfield Place. So I'm speaking in my capacity as a representative of Cypress Mountain and as a resident of West Vancouver. I'm here to express my support for the project and the support of Cypress Mountain. As a significant summer and winter business at the upper end of the Cypress Bowl Road, we will absolutely be affected by this project. It is our belief that the effect of the project will be positive on Cypress Mountain and positive on the community. We believe that the goals of the project align with the official community plan, aiming to create a sustainable, vibrant community while preserving valuable natural areas for recreation and conservation. We understand that the alternative to the project, as has been mentioned before, is not no development. For Cypress Mountain, traffic congestion on the road is a, is a concern, and it is our belief that absent this project, traffic on the road will increase, and that the way that this project has been proposed will decrease traffic with more people that will live, resident, stay, shop, walk, go to school within this community. We believe that the benefit of a diverse mix of housing will benefit the broader community and will benefit Cypress Mountain. There are very few folks who work on Cypress Mountain who are able to afford to live in West Vancouver. This project will provide people with that opportunity to live at the base of the location in which they work. And we believe that this project will benefit the economic viability and livability of West Vancouver for people that live here now and for people that live here in the future. We are completely in support of this project for British Pacific Properties and for municipal staff and council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Sorry, Mr. Davies, councillor Watt has a quick question.
Yeah, so I spend a lot of time up there on your mountain, and I've, one of the questions I've had has been about traffic. And I'm curious, have you, has there been any dialogue with yourselves and the BPPs about a shuttle or anything that will help alleviate some of the traffic, or is that just something that would come down the road?
There hasn't currently been dialogue. So first things first, I just celebrated my one-year anniversary.
Ah, okay. Congratulations.
At Cypress Mountain. So early days, absolutely. One of the things that we are really looking forward to is on occupancy day one, that there is a shuttle from Park Royal to Cypress Village. And we will definitely be speaking with all stakeholders around how we at Cypress Mountain can have a shuttle that connects from the village up to Cypress Mountain to give people that, that seamless connectivity from Park Royal to Cypress Village up to Cypress Mountain. Presently, there are no public transportation options to, to Cypress, and we think that's a missed opportunity.
Yeah, and it'll certainly assist even some of your employees that live farther down in West Van or North Van to be able to find their way there and take that shuttle as opposed to going to Park Royal.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Davies, and the next speaker.
The next speaker is Jason Kittler, followed by Alan Vardsley.
Mr. Kittler, thanks for joining us this evening.
Mayor and council, appreciate the opportunity to, to speak tonight. My name is Jason Kittler. I've been a West Van resident for forty years. I moved here when I was eight years old and grew up at Sentinel Hill, went to Ridgeview, followed by Sentinel, then off to university and worldly adventures that I, that I did. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about a few things. Firstly, you know, as a resident of Whitecliff area, I'm super excited about the environmental preservation of Eagle Ridge. My daughter goes to school in that community. I've got business in that community and, you know, protection of that land, preserving that land for usage for not only myself and my neighbors, but my, my daughter and her daughter and their daughters to come. Cypress Village and community spaces, obviously, you know, the Shed and Cypress Papa Village has been enormously successful from a business standpoint and from a community engagement standpoint. I think we get so many people up there enjoying the space. We have an awesome opportunity to create a business up there in partnership with the guys at BPP, who have been incredible to work with, so.
Mr. Kittler, I think I should just tell people in case, because every member of council knows that you, you own and run the pop-up, but if you want a great pizza, this is the fellow you go to.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, and you know, and I can...
I got a little plug in there for you.
It is, it is great pizza, it is. You know, in saying that, you know, the pop-up has been a huge impact... You know, in saying that, you know, the pop-up has been a huge impact on my life, and I guess you look at Cypress Village and what opportunities come for business and employment. And as a returning resident to West Vancouver, we've had the opportunity to create business at the pop-up. And in that business, we've had the ability and the opportunity to employ local staff, right? So we have returning staff from university. We probably, to say, we actually have three restaurants in West Vancouver, and at each of those restaurants, we employ kids from the neighborhood. So I think, you know, I think in my notes here, I said, what did I say? Returning residents, creating business, creating jobs. You know, I think for us, it's been an opportunity to come home and create business opportunities and employment. So really, really important for us and our families and our friends and the people that I graduated at Sentinel with and the rest, right? So, look, you know, in saying all that, you know, obviously incredibly supportive of the Cypress Village plan, I'm excited about the opportunity to maybe potentially do more business with BPP and create, you know, better community space and opportunities. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Kettler. And all that applause was for your pizzas.
Alan Bardsley, followed by Mary Gamel.
Mr. Bardsley, thanks, and thanks for all your involvement over so many years on this whole hillside. It's much appreciated.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure to be involved, and normally I'm involved on many aspects, and whenever I come to council, it's always a question of which hat am I wearing when I come and speak to you? Well, today is different. I'm going to be wearing all my hats. So as president of the Old Growth Conservancy Society, and speaking on behalf of the directors, I want to express their enthusiastic support for the preservation of the Eagle Ridge lands as park space. The value of that large continuous green space is, it's quite obvious. As a mountain biker, I want to thank parks for how they have stepped up and learned to work with volunteer trail maintainers in the Cypress Sees Trails, and they're currently partnering with the North Shore Mountain Bike Association. And I'm so proud that the NSMBA is now managing a project that will restore safe hiking in the Old Forks area. And as a former member of the Upper Lands Working Group, I just have to tell you how impressed I am by the work that staff has done here and with the consultants that they've brought in. The work is outstandingly detailed, high-quality, and this, you know, the communication that's gone out to the public and the chances for public input have been phenomenal. So everybody should be, should know about this thing, and there's really not much more to say other than let's get this thing done.
Thanks so much. Thanks for joining us.
The next speaker on the list is Mary Gamel, followed by, I believe it's Stephen Bowne.
Thank you.
Mary Gamel.
Ms. Gamel.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
I wish to support the Cypress Village development, particularly the increased density which will allow for forest preservation, but I do have some additional comments. The plans for Cypress Village have been developing over many years, well before the municipality declared a climate crisis. What development strategies will change in response to our changing climate? This is an opportunity to design with nature. The preservation of mature trees rather than replanting must be a priority. Earth-disturbing activities and grading impact the vegetation and soil for many years. Clearing reduces the natural uptake of water and nutrients by vegetation, and excessive grading increases the velocity of runoff. Therefore, earth disturbance should be limited to maintain existing vegetation, topography, and soil structure. This should be an opportunity to build a sustainable village. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And the next speaker.
I believe it's Stephen Bowne, followed by Ron Wood.
Thank you. Mr. Bowne, thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening, mayor, Sager, and council. I'm Stephen Bowne. I'm the executive director of Kiwanis North Shore Housing Society. I'm here to endorse this project. Our organization is working over 70 years now to support West Vancouver and the North Shore communities with affordable housing. This project in particular is a wonderful project, in our opinion, because the planning that has gone into this project has incorporated something that we feel is needed. So the face development proposal for the construction of the more than 3,700 housing units over this period of 20-plus years includes 5%, unfortunately only 5% of affordable housing, and allows the growth and the choices that West Vancouver needs in terms of housing options. The proposed land development plan with its community facilities and amenities for Cypress Village is thoughtful, attractive, and suitable for this location. The community benefits of this proposed land development are significant and will positively impact future generations. So we encourage mayor and council to adopt the proposed project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
The next speaker is former mayor Ron Wood, followed by Jim Graham.
Mr. Mayor, it's good to see you tonight, and your wonderful wife, Joanne. Thanks for coming this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments tonight. I live at Deer Ridge on Cypress Bowl Road, and just before I comment, I too was reflecting with Jim McLean in the audience tonight that we both go back to conceptual discussions regarding the development of the Cypress Village lands more than 20 years ago. It's a long time. Now, as a resident of the adjoining development at Deer Ridge on Cypress Bowl Road, I wish to say that the recent BPP developments in the area, specifically the Courtney Building and the properties adjoining Mulgrave School, have been positive additions to our area. And as you would expect, the Deer Ridge residents are hopeful these and the future Cypress Village development hold the promise of public transit being provided in the area in the near future, desperately needed. Based on my understanding of the BPP proposal of Cypress Village and the ultimate build-out in 20 to 25 years, I believe this will be a positive community development of which we will all be proud on land that lends itself to development in West Vancouver. Thank you to BPP and the West Vancouver staff for their tenacity and their commitment in presenting this proposal tonight, that well over 20 years since the concept was originally considered. I am supportive of the proposal and believe it will be a progressive step forward in the growth of West Vancouver. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my friend. I should just comment as well that our wonderful director of engineering and I have been meeting, we met last week with TransLink, and we are trying and we're pushing for transit up to this area sooner, as soon as humanly possible. Good evening.
Mayor Sager, members of council, my name is Jim Graham, and along with my wife Barbie, we have been residents of West Vancouver for over 45 years. Three years ago, we did what we didn't think, I didn't think we'd ever do, and that is we chose to downsize and move into a condo. So we feel so privileged to live at Stonecliff Estates at 3315, and we share this privilege with residents of Deer Ridge, Courtney Place, The Peak, new housing recently built under construction across from us. So it encompasses about 350 residents times the multiple of possibly two, and when you consider that and the Mulgrave School with 1,030 students, that's a lot of cars and a lot of people to move in that area. So we are in so, we're so supportive of this project, but one of our concerns is the infrastructure that probably needs to be built sooner than later. And into that end, the, if you were ever at the entrance of Mulgrave School on a school day, you will see the necessity to safeguard all the residents and especially the students and parents as the current chaos and dangerous drop-off points extend to the Upper Levels Highway and along the highway. Sooner or later, there is going to be an accident, so I'd like to take this opportunity, since we're building out this incredible village, that we address this by putting the two additional lanes in up to Cypress Bowl and then exiting back onto the freeway. And I also need to thank Rice Tupper for putting up with my phone calls and questions to this end. So thank you for that. To Ron Wood's point and to our discussion earlier, the bus is absolutely essential, and especially now with the growth, so again, sooner than later would be ideal. The, obviously, the two additional roads coming in and exiting up to the Upper Levels Highway is mandatory, and what excites me the most is the new proposed exit on West Mount to go up to the pop-off and the future roundabout and then right to the village. That would be key, and as the build-out is happening over the next five years, if that could be stepped up a little faster to maybe the beginning of the five-year period to make that happen would be fantastic. The most important, I think, for anybody living where we live, where we're living in the, we're just such a privilege to live in the forest and look at the ocean right at your forefront, and I'm on council, and I am paranoid about a fire. You can just see this whole mountain imploding, so the fire station that you referred to earlier is absolutely such a priority and paramount to the success of everything that's going to happen on the build-out. So Barbie and I, my wife and I, absolutely support this project. One of my concerns is always the wildlife, and I'm wondering what are the considerations for the wildlife? I mean, we have, we have great, beautiful old bears roaming through our property and sometimes sitting behind a car. You have to wait for the bear to leave, or coyotes, but I hate, I mean, that's why we move there, so we could be, have a part of nature and the tranquility of the ocean. So what is being done to address wildlife?
Thank you. We'll ask that, and just, well, Mr. Bailey, who would address that? I know there has been consideration in the plan about wildlife corridors. And Mr. Graham, I just have to say, sir, it was your call to me where you highlighted the need for transit to Stonecliff and Deer Ridge that started the discussions that the director and I have been having with TransLink, so I thank you for bringing that forefront to us.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
So, Mr. Mayor, just, big picture is the preservation of the land. I mean, that obviously provides a more continuous habitat for wildlife, but within the development, you know, it's been contemplated, there are a series of guidelines and development requirements as the village builds out, development permit guidelines that deal and require appropriate steps be taken to mitigate and help, you know, deal with the impacts of wildlife, you know, modeled on places like Whistler, best practices, and we'll continue to look at those and improve those as we build out and as we go.
So nothing for crossing across the highway because the highway is going to become terribly busy? I mean, right now, we have deer that are being hit occasionally and coyotes and is there, there's not a tunnel or anything that's being thought of as an alternate?
With respect to the Ministry of Transportation's infrastructure, no, but that is something we could certainly bring up with them, and, you know, much like you've encouraged us to do that, we're happy to have that conversation as we move forward.
Yeah, that would be, that would be excellent. Thank you. So the only other question I have is, we have a pedestrian trail at Stonecliff and Deer Ridge, actually, and originally, I understood that the incredible trail from the pop-up that goes up to the Trestle Bridge was going to connect, was going to connect all the way down to Deer Ridge and to Cypress.
I think we could certainly follow up on that. We have gone over your time, and Ms. Kettler, who is director of our Parks and Recreation System, if you give me a call, we can follow up on that question.
Perfect.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Mr. Chu, can I just ask how many people we have on the list?
On the list currently, we have three and nine more names.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, would you mind, members of council, in the last two days, we've been sitting a bit, could we take a 10-minute recess, and we'll be right back? Is that all right? Thank you.
When we get into the building designs and do what we can to mitigate any damage that way.
Okay, because some of these buildings that you are going to be putting up are, if you get passed, are of significant height. So rather than passing the cost of this glass on these windows onto the strata council, shouldn't you, as the builder, be installing them? Because you will recoup your costs when you sell off the apartments. So shouldn't you be more proactive in the equation rather than reactive and expect a strata to pick up the tab?
Yeah, I think in the case of the Courtney, we are funding that.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, we are.
You are funding it, not the strata?
Correct.
Thank you.
And so I think going forward, I think there's a lot...oh, Mr. Bailey's got some...
Sorry, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of clarification, Ms. Lapp did bring this issue up during the public consultation. We heard that. And as a result, we added the requirement for bird-friendly architectural features. It's in our design guidelines as a requirement of the district when BPP is building its building. So it's something that they've indicated a willingness to work with us on, but it's actually, so you're aware, it's a requirement when they come forward to help mitigate those impacts. And it's thanks to the input of Ms. Lapp that we're doing that and thinking about that.
Between development and wind turbines, we definitely are losing an inordinate number of our bird life. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cassidy. Councilor Gambioli.
Oh, I can sit on that, sir.
Sure.
Well, that's a great example of how we're listening to the community. So my questions just came...I was saving them, but I'll ask them now because they're all sort of a little bit related. One of the previous speakers, I think, said that within the area, that is the Cypress Village area, only 30% of the land is not developed, not planned to be developed. Is that an accurate statement?
So the 30% refers to the amount of land in the Cypress Village planning area that's to be retained as natural areas, creeks, riparian areas, and recreation areas. So if you combine that, in addition to basically all of the Eagle Ridge planning area being protected, if you think of the two planning areas together, it's actually 75% of the land in the two planning areas that will be retained as natural areas, which is unprecedented in neighborhood planning.
Okay. And the second question, perhaps, well, actually from a different person, is for me. Can we sort of, in broad strokes, talk about how the topography has been taken into account in terms of what we have planned in the area, specifically Cypress Village area?
Through the mayor to Councilor Gambioli, the topography and the natural framework, we did a very detailed environmental Civ analysis that included a topographical analysis, looked at a number of constraints around topography, including geo-hazards, creek corridors, those sorts of things, to come up with the best plan for where sort of the framework of the plan would be situated in terms of, if you will, the bones of the plan with the roads and the infrastructure that's needed to service the development. And then very carefully thought, based on that topographical and environmental Civ analysis, where then the buildings would be best situated to take advantage of the most appropriate sighting to minimize environmental impacts. But also to...I think one of the other speakers picked up on it is that in careful view analysis of mitigating the impacts of the views to and from the site was all sort of contemplated in a very comprehensive way around topography.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councilor Watt.
Yeah. Back to the subject of birds. Question I was going to ask earlier, and I didn't, and I suppose it could be somewhat relevant. When I look at the village layout, the towers are...they're all kind of...they're not all together. And when you think of this dialogue about birds, is it safer for birds if you've got the center, you know, the tall towers together? And I guess I'm just ultimately curious as to the placing of the towers.
Through the mayor, to be honest, the birds weren't really contemplated specifically with regards to the placing of the towers.
Yeah.
But again, we've thought very carefully about strategies to help mitigate wildlife. Surprisingly, or maybe not surprisingly, given sort of the environmental ethic of this community, wildlife and birds came up a lot during the public consultation. So we did spend time researching best practices on how we can implement that as we move forward, require that of the developer as it moves forward. And again, that's all integrated into our policies and guidelines moving forward.
But the question I was going to ask before we got on the subject of birds is, can somebody explain the spacing of the towers? Because normally you would see towers in a planned community, I think. I'm not a planner. But more together. And I'm just curious about the...not random spacing, obviously. It's well-planned out, but...
Through the mayor to Councilor Watt, they are largely clustered. If you refer back to the land use plan, the different colors of the land use plan, there is that Zone 1, that's the red sort of zone that provides essentially the commercial core. That is where you'll see the predominant location of towers in that area. And then it disperses as you sort of head, I guess, northwest up Eagle Lake Road and becomes more spread out. So the focus of it will be primarily in that commercial core and will spread out as you move away from that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mendez, thanks very much for joining us this evening.
Good evening, your worship, council members and staff. My name is Victoria Mendez, and I live at 1987 Kings Avenue. It was important for me to come this evening to share my support of Cypress Village project. And I come wearing two hats. I come as a parent, and I come as the co-leader of the Pauline Johnson Outdoor Learning and Community Park. I had the opportunity in 2016 to fully engage in the community process of understanding what Cypress Village could mean to our community. Participating in the charrette process, the charrette process is a visioning process where we get to dream what do we want, what do our children want, what do our neighbors want? And it allows us to think about what could an exciting new community mean to West Vancouver. The PJ Community Park also went through an exhaustive charrette experience with distinguished landscape architect Cornelia Oberlander. And we also engaged in extensive community talks with all of our stakeholders. Going through this experience and building a park allowed me to fully appreciate the time, the care, the energy that British Pacific Properties went through back in 2016 to fully engage with the community, to understand what they wanted and what they could bring to our community as a larger vision. BPP also played a vital role in the building of our park. They are an excellent community partner. They supported us with many materials that helped build a successful park that the whole community can enjoy. I'm also very happy that Cypress Village has been rezoned. It's been rezoned because I don't think what we want are these large family homes that are not going to be appropriate for future use. I'm happy that it's been rezoned into multifamily, different types of housing arrangements to create an inclusive community. So when I look at that with my parent hat on, I have an 18-year-old and I have a 20-year-old, and I truly hope that they will be able, when they come back to this province, that they will hopefully be able to come back to West Vancouver and be able to make a living choice to live here because there's going to be a variety of housing to choose from. I think a variety of housing is just so incredibly important for our community. We've heard people here tonight who've wanted to downsize. My parents moved into this community from Seashell. It took them years to find a place to live when they were downsizing. So I do believe in that. I also wanted to briefly comment on transit. I live a block away from 21st, and many of us here have experienced transit. The bridge, Highway 1, our side streets, we all want to pull our hair out when there's lots of backup. But traffic congestion is...it spans multiple jurisdictions, and this is a larger issue that we're not going to solve tonight. But when we do look forward, we've got to speak to our other communities like Seashell, like Squamish, like the BC ferries, because this is contributing overall to our traffic congestion. It's not just one little piece of the pie here in West Vancouver. So I'd like to end my remarks to staff. I just want to thank them for their tireless work towards this project and their professionalism. And I do really appreciate what they've put forward and their engagement that they've done with the community. And I would like to urge council to vote in favor of this tremendous project, which I think will be a real turning point for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez.
The next speaker is Klaus Jensen, followed by Ken Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Can I get my glasses on here? Thank you. Klaus Jensen, 50-year-plus resident. I live at 1020 King George's Way, and I enjoy it. I enjoy the view and the trees and the shrubs and all that good stuff. I'm going to be wearing two hats tonight. One's my own hat, and then my second hat is President of Civics. And I'm going to be giving you the results of a survey that was carried on about Cypress Village. 325 West Van residents, and just sort of as a visual, that's like seven times the number of people that are in this room. So just please keep that in mind. Because a significant element of the Cypress Village justification is that new property taxes are going to exceed costs in Cypress Village and that, in fact, Cypress Village will be subsidizing the rest of West Vancouver. I disagree with that conclusion, and I've stated that several times to planning. And I think it's the opposite way. I think, in fact, West Vancouver residents, current residents, will be subsidizing Cypress Village, built out at least $5 million per year. I continue to disagree with this financial analysis that's in the documents provided. And so I asked for, "Give me a copy of the model. Give me the model, please, please." And I was declined. I also asked for a copy of the CAC calculation for Cypress Village, not for Eagle Ridge. I mean, it's part of it. Again, I was declined. Now, I did find out that Eagle Ridge, in all of this magic number routine, is valued at $500 million. That's the plug in the community amenities contribution calculation, half a billion dollars for its park. So just a brief history here for me. So I have an MBA in operations research, including linear programming and optimization. I'm a charter accountant, three-year economic analyst with Chevron. Now, a big job, big part of my job at Chevron was maintaining a linear program that the purpose of the program was to calculate the incremental cost. The reason I'm bringing this up is because our planning group has decided that they're going to apply incremental cost to the cost of Cypress Village, and I strongly disagree with that. I own and manage my own business for 30 years. I started with small staff, and when I sold, I had 400 staff in 16 locations in BC and Alberta. Now, over the years, I developed a process for evaluating important decisions that worked for me. So determine the top decision variables, maximum five, no more than you can write on one piece of paper. Rank the decision variables from the most irreversible, not money, but most irreversible to the down below. Assess the quality of the data used. So in my view, these are the key decision variables on Cypress Village densification, ranked. Number one, carbon dioxide from construction and operation of 3,711 buildings will equal 660 million kilograms of carbon dioxide emitted through the life of this project. This is a graph of carbon dioxide buildup in our atmosphere. Carbon dioxide does not discriminate. It doesn't care if it comes from affordable housing. It doesn't care if it comes from cars. It builds up, and it builds up. It doesn't have a half-life. It just accumulates and accumulates, and eventually, I guess we get heated up. The point here is that West Vancouver has a climate emergency bylaw, and I don't quite know how council is reconciling the fact that this bylaw exists and yet permitting the eventual release of some 6 million kilograms.
That's time, sir.
Pardon me?
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
That's your time.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I'll speak for my other half then.
The next speaker...
You'll have to wait until the end, sir. I'll offer opportunities for people to come back. Councilor Gambioli?
So, yeah, thank you. That brings a couple of questions to mind for me. And I might as well ask them now. So going backwards, it is interesting to think about the building that is going to happen versus the building that would have happened anyway. I wonder if it's our staff or the BPP who should answer. But most CO2 emissions relating to buildings come from concrete. And so how are we looking to mitigate that with this new development? Are there any details or anything worth sharing on that?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Yeah, sure. So through the mayor, in terms of just buildings being constructed and generally in West Vancouver, I mean, this council and the preceding council has passed what we consider to be the greenest building standards in the province. They're performance-based with respect to BC Building Code, STEP Code, British Pacific Properties, in terms of even, frankly, their marketing and how they sell buildings are looking to clients who are looking for green solutions. So your rules and regulations irrespective of Cypress Village are leading the way in terms of green buildings and in terms of energy emissions, in line with provincial standards, which, again, provincial standards in the context of the globe are extremely high, looking to get towards, I think, carbon neutrality by 2032. So you're definitely leading the way with respect to carbon emissions on the building side of things. And again, as you pointed out earlier, buildings are part of the emissions package, but transportation is also part of the emissions package. So again, included in this plan is a comprehensive plan that provides for active transportation, that provides for transit, and provides for 262 acres as park, which acts as a carbon sink. And frankly, we could start to look at as an opportunity for future carbon credits that could help finance various projects within the municipality. So I think a very comprehensive approach to dealing with carbon and carbon emissions as part of this plan has been thought about by our consultants and by, frankly, the developer as this moves forward.
Okay. So in other words, all our current building bylaws relate to this project going forward already and any others that we might want to add?
Well, and as they're required by provincial regulations to become more stringent, that will continue to occur and seek the optimal in-carbon performance.
Right. Okay. And so then my second question relates to the sort of comments about the financial analysis, and I wonder if staff or our other staff...
Yeah, I would like to invite Mr. Wallenberg and Mr. Erb to the podium.
Sure. I wonder specifically about, yeah, the financial analysis and what's the sort of expectation around releasing some of that information and CAC information, just high level, and just any other comments around the financial analysis part?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak, I guess, to the release of information.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
And then if there are comments around the financial analysis and anything that Mr. Wallenberg or Mr. Erb would like to add, please feel free to do so. I mean, the reason that we don't provide all the detailed information is a lot of that information is proprietary. It's a negotiation between British Pacific Properties and ourselves with respect to financial value, and it's typically not released publicly. So the public is aware, I mean, council is made aware of these numbers through briefings from staff as we move forward, and we've commented and provided briefings throughout this process and feel confident, as Ms. Olenek indicated, that we're on the, quote-unquote, the good end of this land deal.
Thank you. Councilor Cassidy.
So, thank you, Mr. Bailey. So the answer to Mr. Jensen's request, which was declined, for a copy of the CAC calculations, you in essence are saying that he didn't get this copy because they...proprietary negotiations.
No. So could you guys maybe come to the...
Thank you.
Turn it over to Mr. Erb.
Mr. Erb, thanks for joining us this evening.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor Sager. Blair Erb from Coriolis, through the mayor to councillor. A few things I'll just clarify. So as was mentioned earlier this evening, the financial analysis that was done to inform the business term negotiations was not a CAC analysis. So there, in fact, is no CAC analysis to share. So I'd like to say that. Instead, what we focused on is a different approach which favors the District of West Vancouver, whereby we were trying to balance the value of the property that British Pacific Properties currently owns under its existing zoning with the value that would be supported by the proposed project. Normally, West Vancouver would seek 75% of any increased land value. What we're doing effectively is getting 100% or, in fact, more in this case, to West Vancouver. So it's a different approach. It's a nuance, but it's not a community amenity contribution analysis. The financial modeling includes many pieces of information that are confidential and would harm British Pacific Properties' financial and business position if it was released publicly.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I just want to reiterate that an incredibly important part is that my financial fiduciary responsibility to this community and to the taxpayers and residents of this community, that if this deal, this project goes forward, that at the end of the day, West Vancouver, not only with the diversity of housing and land that has been kept into the nature and so forth, but also financially speaking. Okay? So when I ask you this question, I do not in any way mean to be impertinent, but it is relevant to me. Who has paid the salary of the individuals or the company that did this financial analysis? Who paid the bill? West Vancouver or British Pacific Properties? Who paid the salaries?
Through the mayor. So through a cost-recovered agreement, West Vancouver paid the consultants.
So our taxpayers paid the consultant?
Through a cost-recovered agreement.
And could you please explain to everyone who's here tonight or who's watching this just exactly what does a cost-recovery agreement mean?
So a cost-recovery agreement, much like any rezoning we do. So if a developer comes in and wants to do something, whether it's a rezoning or building permit, council's attitude, and I think quite rightly so, is that that shouldn't be a burden to the taxpayer. So what we typically do in those scenarios is we recover the funds through, in the case of a building permit, a fee; in the case of a rezoning, a fee; and in the case of an area development plan, a cost-recovered agreement where the developer funds, with council's blessing, the municipality to then pay various consultants as deemed appropriate by mayor and council and by the director of planning and the city manager to do those projects.
Okay. So being rather simple-minded, what you're in essence saying to me is the right hand, British Pacific Properties, paid the left hand, which is West Vancouver, for the services of the individuals who did the financial negotiations?
Through the mayor, I think what I'm saying is that, or what I am saying, is that the council of West Vancouver saw Cypress Village as a priority. At the same time, council astutely realized that they didn't want to burden the taxpayers to fund that, and they said what an appropriate way to do that would be, would be to have British Pacific Properties fund that through the impartial review of staff and through council to make that project happen.
Okay. So as I'm reading what you're saying, is British Pacific Properties paid the salary of the company that did the financial negotiations? Am I right or wrong?
Wrong. Councilor Cassidy, that's wrong.
Really? It's a rather convoluted process.
The District of West Vancouver pays Mr. Erb and his colleagues for this work. This is the standard way all developments are done by municipalities throughout the province of British Columbia, almost universally.
And also for the public's edification, so we were not privy to any of the negotiation process. We were merely provided with the answers to the negotiations.
Sorry. Councilor Cassidy, we've had numerous meetings.
That's simply a yes or a no?
We've been completely involved in the process. Mr. Bailey?
Through the mayor, I mean... I don't think it's appropriate to comment on closed meetings, but...
No, you're right.
But, you know, council, for the public's edification, council is aware of the negotiations as we move forward on several occasions. In numerous, numerous occasions, council's been briefed on the essence of this project.
Okay. That should not have been an uncomfortable question. It should just have simply been a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cassidy. Thank you, Mr. Erb. Mr. Bailey, just out of curiosity, because I'm aware that Mr. Jensen has written, he's copied me or you've copied me on an incredibly long stream of questions, any idea how many hours of staff time you've spent in response to his questions? Just a ballpark.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I think the questions, which are all valid questions, and I think are questions that deserve to be asked, and we've endeavored to answer every question as we've moved forward because I think, much like you taking the time to do your fiduciary duty, we've taken the time, but it is significant time. I think, you know, over the last couple of weeks, I think we maybe spent...
Couple of years.
Couple of years. But over the last couple of years specifically, I think the mayor was asking, it was about 40 questions. And Mr. Wallenberg, would you maybe like to address...could you please go to the...
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, certainly, Mr. Wall.
Sure.
And I do commend you for taking the time to answer in incredible detail every question.
I think a crucial point through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Cassidy is, I guess in a way, you're asking what side we're playing on. And I want to absolutely assure you that the perspective of the consulting team that's been hired by your municipality to represent you and your interests in this process is exactly the same as yours, and while we may disagree on some analysis and assumptions exactly the same as Mr. Jensen's, our job from day one has been to say, "All right, you folks have a vision. You've articulated a vision over decades to secure the protection of some important land and create a compact, sustainable new community. We didn't make that up. You made that up. You engaged us, and fortunately, you got somebody else to pay the tab. But we don't care who pays the tab. Our allegiance is to you and this community. And the only thing we have been concerned about from day one is trying to achieve your vision in a way that's the best possible way we could do for your community." So all of the stuff about the $500 billion for Eagle Ridge, it's a red herring. Ms. Olenek has made very clear that the only reason for that appraisal was to make sure that we weren't crazy when we were making calculations and assumptions about the value of the land, and to make sure that that little bar chart she showed you would end up in your favor. The analysis of financial impact, and Mr. Jensen alluded to that, he specifically said he doesn't like the incremental cost approach we used. I'll dwell on that for a second, if I may. Cypress Village is going to cost less per home and less per resident than anywhere else in your community. Why? 100% of the capital cost, except for the $2.8 million on the material transfer site, 100% of the capital cost is paid by BPP or comes out of existing capital reserves that you already have on hand. No new capital cost for any district resident, except... No new capital cost for any district resident, except the $2.8 million for the material transfer facility. Number two, all of the infrastructure in Cypress Village is brand spanking new. Even at buildout, when this stuff in the ground is 20 years old, it's going to be younger than almost all the infrastructure in your municipality. It costs less to operate and maintain. Number three, this is a very high density, compact community, and your own financial plan for years 22 through 26 makes a point of saying it is so much cheaper per household or per capita to create and maintain infrastructure in high density communities. Why? Because most of it's linear. The length of road per person is a tenth or less. The length of water and sewer line per person is a tenth or less. Street lights, and even some things that don't immediately seem linear, like police and fire are less because they're driving less. And finally, the incremental cost of a person is a lot lower than the average. Unless Cypress Village succeeds and sets up its own mayor and council and builds its own municipal hall, the residents of Cypress Village don't need a new city hall. The residents of Cypress Village will use some of your facilities, but the marginal extra cost of service, I mean, service thing is a lot low than the overall average cost of what you're providing. So it is my opinion, having done some analysis, that Cypress Village will generate more in new property tax and other new revenues, which is important to keep in mind, because there's commercial property tax as well, and there are user fees that come from people, and there are other revenues taken out of your budget. When we look at what we think the financial contribution of Cypress Village will be relative to the marginal extra cost of Cypress Village, we think it comes out ahead. I know Mr. Jensen disagrees, and we've had correspondence dialogue, as has been referred to by the mayor on this point. It wouldn't help Mr. Jensen to plow through Excel code, because at the end of the day, he will come back and say, well, it's not the model I have a problem with, I just disagree on some of the assumptions. He does not buy our opinion that the incremental cost per household is lower. He does not buy our opinion that the revenues will exceed the cost. But all I can tell you is that's our, not only is it our opinion, in 2008, you hired a well-respected financial consultant to a very similar analysis for the Rogers Creek rezoning. They were even more conservative than we were. They thought the costs per person would be far, far less than what we assumed. British Pacific also hired an independent, well-respected planning and engineering firm to do the same kind of work that we had the opportunity to review. In the main, we disagreed with some of their small assumptions, but in the main, all three of us, different people, different times, came to the same conclusion, that the creation of a compact, relatively small, I mean, after all, it's 15% of your population, new, sustainable community will add less to your cost than the revenue it will produce. And that's not me or Nicole or Blair talking on behalf of British Pacific Properties. We're not here to sell you a project. I mean, that's Bryce and Jeff's job to sell you. Our job is to say, you have a vision, we've done everything in our professional power to help you achieve that vision in a way that leaves you solidly to the plus side of the financial ledger. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Sorry, Counselor Cassidy has another question.
Okay.
You're not used to that, are you?
It's not so much that I have another question. Again, these are questions that need to be asked, yes. And, you know, I always find, I had a 40 odd year career in the financial industry, and you can say whatever you like about anything in life, but at the end of the day, it's all about the money. It's all about the money. For British Pacific Properties, they're going to build a project, but they're going to make a profit, all right? And theory, at present, this is being presented as a symbiotic relationship, and I just want to make sure, it is a symbiotic relationship, and that the residents and taxpayers of West Vancouver are getting the best value for their money. Thank you, and what they're giving up, because they are giving up. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ken Schultz, followed by Gary Proznik and Jackie Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz, welcome. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I just want to express my support and urge you to vote in favor of the project. As one of the few, or if only under 30 crowd in the audience this evening
[laughter]
Sorry, Andy. I do want to say that this project provides opportunity for future young people like myself to have an opportunity to come back to the community that raised us, the only, with the alternative being only single family homes that are economically unsustainable, socially unsustainable, and environmentally unsustainable. It also doesn't align with young people's values and future market demands. So please vote and support this project for diverse housing, saving more forest green spaces, and continuing to do, supporting environmentalism in West Vancouver.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Thanks for joining us.
Gary Proznik, followed by Jackie Swanson.
Mr. Proznik, two nights in a row, nice to see you.
Yes.
I think you can guess what you're going to say.
You want to score the game?
Oh, that was cheeky last name. He was going to disclose the score in the hockey game.
No, I was
You were so close.
Okay, so first of all, I've been here almost two years now, talking about the need for more varied housing, and in my view, more village type experiences. And this is exactly what this is, and I'm just so happy to see so many people talking about it, because I've known this exists in the community, although everyone, planners and people have told me of years it doesn't exist, these people don't want to develop in West Vancouver. Well, I think tonight's a good example that they do. So I may ask to speak again, depending on what Mr. Jensen says next time, because I have quite a lot of involvement with Mr. Jensen talking about his approach. And I don't agree with it, and I think some of the information he's got is not well thought, because he doesn't have the experience as Mr., the gentleman from Coriolis. Now, I have a, have a team of housing specialists I worked with for the last 25 years that do equivalent work, and it is a totally different analysis that done. We often use ARGUS Developer, you'll know that model, and do sophisticated analysis like this, for projects bigger than this. And it is art in itself, and I can assure Counselor Cassidy that I would have full confidence in your advisor, and it is quite normal to have your advisors advising you and then somebody else pick up the bill. But their professional loyalty is to you, and their reputation is to you. So I would have no difficulty with that. The other thing I would say, that a former partner of mine was on the board of BP for several years, not now, but I called him today, and I just wanted to get his own personal view about the character of the people that are involved in this project and the firm itself. And I got everything from how they got involved with West Van, which was interesting, because there was another major Canadian company wanting to keep them out, and their insistence and some other people got them involved in. So the historical relationship with them is actually pretty sound, and I've heard from many people with them acting really in, as a good corporate citizen here. So I would have no difficulty about that, or about the comments of my former partner, who said that these guys that are doing this job for the last several years are just unbelievable. They have full authority from their, you know, their head office in the UK to kind of do the best they can to make this a win-win for this community. So I would expect that, because they have an impeccable reputation to maintain. So I would give some assurance on that personally, and I'd give some assurance on the advice that your professional has, because we work in those areas. I just want to say that this is an unbelievable opportunity to create this village, but you know what? We need a number of little villages like this too. And I suggest a big pushback on this four unit per house, and to start building some density around schools as nodes, and have mini villages. I mean, I just experienced Horseshoe Bay recently, because my daughters live in there, and I'm told it's the best village in the North Shore. And I think if you can replicate that in little spots, you deal with a lot of traffic off the streets. We have Rush Hour, Taylorway Rush Hour in front of our house between Ridge U and West Van, and that exists in all the schools, and you can get rid of that and deal with some of these carbon problems. So I really encourage the model here, I encourage you to vote for this, but the model is a similar model to do elsewhere, because you're still not going to solve the problem of the missing middle and the young people that need housing, because this one is some years out, and I don't know that how much of that is going to provide workers for the rest of West Vancouver. I would say, though, that this is a major project for West Van to work with BP over the next several, many years, and I worry that West Van's not ready for it. They don't have the resources, because this is a pretty major project, and they've done not a lot of development. So I really think, you know, help your existing people and bone up, because this is a very active, you know, partnership effectively for BP. So I really encourage all of you to support it and look forward to the result.
Thank you, Mr. Proznik.
And if I might ask to maybe speak again, depending on what it said.
Well, we will try not to have a community debate between the two of you, but that could take, that could keep us here all night. Sorry, the next speaker is
Jackie Swanson, followed by Elaine McHarg and Steve Nichols.
Thank you. Ms. Swanson, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you, mayor, council, and staff for allowing me to give my glowing praise for British Properties and for the project that they've undertaken about 10 years ago. My name is Jackie Swanson. I was born and raised at the base of Hollyburn Mountain in 1955. In turn, I raised two children in that same dune of community with Hollyburn as my backdrop. And I'm currently a longtime cabin owner up at Hollyburn. In the last couple of decades, I've been involved in several Hollyburn stakeholder groups, including serving as a director and president of the Hollyburn Ridge Association, director for the Hollyburn Heritage Society, and chair of the Hollyburn Lodge 2015 Renewal Project. As I said earlier, I'm here to support Cypress Village. Village is a good word for what I see happening here. It started with the BPP intention, bridging community with the outdoors and creating opportunity for people to form community. Mr. Crowell and his handpicked team have followed through on these commitments from day one. The popular pop-up shop and trestle walk popped up a few years ago now, where new community and visitors can meet for pizza and beer, hike, or meet to hatch creative ideas in a stunning mountain environment. I've held board meetings and business meetings in that location, in that unforgettable outdoor space, and have seen others doing the same. Families and friends gather from all over. Mountain and road bikers do the same. They meet to wash their bikes and share stories of the amazing ride. The annual Cypress Village plein air art event has become a popular tradition in West Vancouver. The BPP management team have been very helpful to these stakeholder groups. They've been thoughtful towards the history of Hollyburn and mindful of the environment. For example, the HHS has long been looking for a home for the original restored Hollyburn tractor. BPP stepped up to provide a safe home, now on long-term display to the public at the pop-up shop. Many history buffs had asked about the original chairlift that took people, that took skiers from West Vancouver up to the original Hollyburn Lodge, ski lodge at Hollyburn that burnt Well, he took it upon himself, or they took it upon themselves, to helicopter two of the, the chairlift, thank you, down into the pop-up village for all the public to They've done to display at the pop-up village. And a road name in their neighborhood developing, in their neighboring development recognizes Fred Burfield, a key name in Hollyburn's amazing Nordic ski history. They provided, they've provided materials to benefit stakeholder groups and have provided large rocks to the District of West Vancouver for seawall repairs. So they're very mindful of their environment and reusing and sharing. They have financially and kindly assisted many stakeholder groups in marketing materials and just general support, as you've heard tonight. I moved to North Vancouver just over a decade ago, as there weren't any, I was downsizing, and there just weren't any options in West Vancouver for me. Now, Cypress Village offers that option with an already existing community from all the work they've done, and plans for more opportunities, more opportunities in their thoughtful and more homes on less land design. I support Cypress Village in this, in this reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson.
Elaine McHarg, followed by Steve Nichols.
Thank you, Ms. McHarg. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, mayor and council, and hardworking staff. You've heard from a number of speakers tonight, thoughtful, supportive, of a dynamic future for West Vancouver, and counting on you to make this happen. I'll add just a few thoughts. I, I'm speaking today on behalf of my husband, Dan Rhodes, and our family, to ask for your support of the Cypress Village development by British Pacific Properties. We've lived in the community for over 30 years in Ambleside, and we've experienced, like most people here, a number of public consultations. Cypress Village, over the years, has been just an outstanding opportunity to understand what the vision was by BPP, to understand what the needs were of the community, and to really get behind the opportunity to address both the needs for density and diversity in housing solutions in our, as our community grows and change, and to do it in an environmentally sensitive way that brings together people. We applaud the intelligent and careful approach that British Pacific Properties has taken in their public community consultations over many years. The letter I'm writing, reading from is actually, the base of it, is the, my comments to council from 2016, and that consultation, which has already been spoken of by a few people. British Pacific Properties is a company that cares deeply about what is possible and what is positive about this mountainside development, and they have been doing this for over 90 years. Most importantly about this project is the design concepts reflect the learning and feedback from the community, and they have involved it over time with BPP demonstrating a commitment to active stewardship and mindful development in this area, and embracing the newest practices as they go through. The proposed neighborhood of Cypress Village has the potential to open up a new way of living in West Vancouver, and I'll say, if you lose Jackie Swanson to North Vancouver, then it really speaks to the fact that you need it. And with the attention of mixed design, multi-general living, and affordability, it has the potential to solve longstanding housing issues in both, for both mature and younger residents. We see Cypress Village as a place where our children, now as young adults, like Kenny, may live in an environment and a development and a neighborhood sensitive to both environmental and social wellness. The added bonus of being able to protect Eagle Ridge and that beautiful space is, just makes West Vancouver a better place to live, to play, and to visit, and will have unbelievable benefits as we move forward over the next decades. The potential of this expansion for our community can only be realized with your support. Dan and I view West Vancouver as our forever home, and we feel that Cypress Village just makes it better. This has been an excellent process to be part of and to see, and our confidence in British Pacific Properties could not be greater. I do want to take the time and the opportunity to thank staff for their work over the years of doing this. This is excellent work. I'd also like to thank the consultants who were brought in and who have really been just core to the thinking and understanding the community, and also the many, many community volunteers who went before this and over the years who helped to inform the thinking. So really, in closing, I just would like to ask you to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McHarg.
The next speaker is Steve Nichols, followed by Kirk Robinson and Robson Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thank you so much for joining us. And I just got to say, ladies and gentlemen, I had the enormous pleasure and privilege, really, of working with this gentleman for many years, sitting at this table, as he was our director of planning, and guided us so wisely. It's great to see you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I wasn't intending to speak tonight, but Mr. Mayor, members of council, I wasn't intending to speak tonight, but after what I've heard from a number of people, I thought I'd make a couple of comments that probably I only know the background to do it with. I joined West Vancouver in 1979, and I was the director of planning until about 2008, something like that. And I live in Whitecliff, and I have for 40 years. So I have two perspectives. The, the first thing I'd like to say is, this project could not have been done in 1980, in spite of the fact that there was the new 1980 community plan, and one part of that, a major part of that, was the guidelines for development above the upper levels. And that had the transfer of density. This could not have been done in 1980, it could not have been done in 1990, it could not have been done in 2000. It's only until the last decade that it was possible to do it. And for a number of reasons, which I don't have to get into, but basically, the community changed over a period of time. What people considered important in West Vancouver changed over that period of time. And what BPP turned into changed over that period of time. So what I saw when I first read this horrendous document of 700 pages or material is that the community of West Vancouver has come to the point where they consider everything on a multiple basis, and its environment, its livability, it's, there's a number of things here to do. But I, what I would say is that the one thing that you have going for you, you've got the power that you get from one developer who is willing to do something, you've got an amazing residential community, which has advisors on any number of subjects, many hours, many, many hours put onto all of the development, land, the environment, how things are done in the community. The, so that, and you have hired, first of all, you have a very good staff as well, but you have hired consultants, who I consider to be probably the best ones, at least in BC, to advise you. And so I don't think I could add anything to the reports that have come before council or anything about the, the money parts of it. The, I have dealt with a lot of that with the Coriolis before, on both sides, against Coriolis and for Coriolis, Coriolis helping us. And they're a fantastic, fantastic group. So the one thing that I thought I would bring up on this is the, the issue that councillor Cassidy brought up, and that's about the transfer of density. It wasn't called transfer of density when it was put into the community plan, it was called area density variation. Transfer of density was a, it was kind of a bad word to use at the time, so it was called area density variation. It was intended to allow different types of development to occur above the upper levels highway. It wanted to create protection for green space, protection of environmentally sensitive lands, the ability to create public uses, trails, the ability to protect creeks, and the ability to have some public facilities. So for example, we did a transfer of density, and the Board of Educate, the Board, School Board, got the school works yard for free. There's a white, there's a school site up on the mountainside, which is not occupied by a school now, that was free. No other municipality was able to get those things going. Transfer of density is used for other purposes, but in West Vancouver, the transfer of density is used, has been used, to protect the environment and to achieve a better development on the lands, and more diversity as well. So it was not intended, and that's the reason it happens, it was not intended to be something where we would transfer density and make money off it in any way. In fact, if you had done that, it wouldn't be a transfer or an area density variation. BPP would have built on the lands, for example, that the, the field is on. Why not? Beautiful views, extremely expensive. They didn't do that, it was part of an entire fixture that was put together in area density variations, the reason we got that school, school, the recreation field. So I think that the, what I've seen anyways, is something which has been building over a period of 40 years, not, not a decade, it's been building over a period of 40 years, and I happened to end up in favor of it. I think it's a great idea to do this. I look upon, being a 40-year resident of West Vancouver—
That's times.
—the only time, I'll say it on my phone, the only neighborhoods I like are the ones that I can go out and walk around in the evening or on the weekend and enjoy myself.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Kirk Robinson, followed by Robson Baker.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the ADP this evening. One of the consequences of being late, and this late on the roster, is my fellow citizens have said pretty much, or shared every point that I was prepared to discuss here this evening, but I'm really blown away by the level of alignment and the consistent messaging from the rest of the community. I've had the opportunity to, to attend many public hearings, you know, all throughout British Columbia over the years as a result of my work, and I can honestly say I've never seen this much aligned view and support for a policy rezoning, ODP, ADP, before. So that's, that's really refreshing and encouraging. My name's Kirk Robinson, I've been a West Vancouverite since 1976. I'm currently in a renter down in, at 22nd and Bellevue, and I'm very pleased to, you know, have the opportunity to still stay within this community, even though I'm a renter, and not a buyer, and don't really have the prospect of purchasing at any time in the near term, anyway. I've also had the privilege of participating in master plan developments all over the world in the last 35 years, and I also have to say, this, in my view, is one of the best I've seen, I think, if you take the combination of the preservation of 75% of the natural habitat and land, and 262 acres of forested area that's being permanently set aside, a small footprint, high-density community with a range of commercial amenities, community amenities, recreation, the lack of need for single-occupant vehicles, and all the other attributes that come with it, I could go on, but my fellow citizens have already talked about that. I really think this will be one of the most socially sustainable, environmentally and commercially sustainable developments, if not in, or sorry, master plans, if not in North America perhaps, in the whole world, as guided by this ADP. And for, for me, who's now looking forward to, how do I plan for retirement, and what are the prospects of being able to stay within West Vancouver, this provides myself and others like me the hope that there is a pathway to potentially remain within the community that otherwise simply would not be there. And I'm part of actually a three, you know, a third, three-generation family, still milling about in this community, and my kids, who are teenagers currently, have quite a bit of anxiety about what their future holds, and, and this provide, they're very excited about this as well, as this provides the potential for them to also have a place to live and, and potentially work and stay and recreate within this community. So I would encourage council to approve this ADP this evening, and I'm just, the only thing I would ask, or the only downside I could see, is that, you know, it's taken a long time to get there, and I hope it can be accelerated, so we can enjoy it earlier rather than later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
The next speaker is Robson Baker, followed by Carolyn Gale.
Thank you. Robson, is it? Robson, Mr. Baker. Oh, there you are. Hello. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you. All right, I would like to thank the council and the members of BPP for all the work that you've done on this project. It can be, a lot of people thank you, it can be a thankless job, but thank you for all the work and all the concern you put into this. I did have a couple of concerns following from the presentation. The projections for 3,700 more units, housing units, and I believe I remember the projection of the population increase would be something like 6,000 something, 6,200, 6,300?
Thank you. Ms., sorry.
6,900, okay. It just, that just seems to me a bit unrealistic. The average for that is less than two persons per housing unit, and I think more realistically, more like three or four people. I mean, some housing units will just have one person living them, but a lot of them are family units, or multiple people living in one unit. It's great that a fire department is being added. I know that the fire department can, in addition to its other responsibilities, do emergency medical services as well. However, right now, the emergency medical services provisions for West Van are inadequate. To my understanding, there is only one ambulance that has been allotted for West Vancouver, and I know that doesn't mean that Lions Gate or St. Paul's can't send another ambulance over if it's needed, but that's if one is available. And I have stories from friends where they have had emergency medical crises, and they had to wait hours for an ambulance to arrive because they were otherwise engaged. So all things considered, I'm just wondering whether there are plans on the horizon to increase the emergency medical services to West Vancouver, given our current population and the several thousand more people that will be populating here. And I would like to also touch on the traffic issue. You said that the increase in traffic would be something like 2% over what it is right now, and therefore, we didn't really need to do anything, but it's kind of an interesting perspective in conjunction with, you had mentioned that there are other developments that will be bringing probably several thousand more cars onto the roads on the North Shore anyways. So when you look at the big picture of the cars that are, which will be in at least a few thousand added with this new development, with other developments, we have a traffic and structural, infrastructure, sorry, right now, that is woefully inadequate, and I'm just wondering whether council will entertain looking into some options to increase, I honestly don't have any ideas other than another connector, but really what's going to happen is the main arteries are Taylorway and Rain Drive and Lions Gate Bridge, and what's going, what's happening now, what's going to happen is it's going to be offloaded onto other arteries like 21st, 15th, Fulton, and Inglewood. And I'm just wondering whether the council will entertain looking into some solutions for this growing traffic congestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Just so you're aware, we work cooperatively with our two North Shore, the other two municipalities on the, on the North Shore with TransLink. We have a separate committee, we are lobbying constantly with our staff for improved transit. We do have some hope coming up, but TransLink has a structural financial deficit, which we need the provincial and federal government to assist us with, and it is all a matter of, of gaining the support and attention around the region for the needs on the North Shore, and we are constantly reminding people that, yes, we are not growing as fast as other areas. I mean, if you look at Langley and Surrey, they're growing by, I think Surrey's growing by 50,000, or Metro's growing by 50,000 people a year, and a lot of that is going to Surrey. So of course, the money goes where the people go, but we're reminding everybody that we have a transportation corridor, a house and corridor, which is growing rapidly, and we need some assistance. So it is something, sir, I want to give you full assurance, that all of us in elected office on the North Shore are working together to address.
Yes, and that's a good point. There's a real push to people on the buses, but the majority of people who buy places, they still want their cars. That's a really important point about the TransLink, and thank you. I think I'll just add, from my own personal experience, you had mentioned that there was a bus that was going to go from the Cypress Estates to Park Royal, but I don't know if you guys have tried it, but if you take the bus, the 250 at Park Royal, you're usually waiting three buses if it's during the day.
I do it, and I know very much what it's like. It's, it's, after Dandarav, you're lucky to get a seat, and after about 15th, you're not going to get on.
Right.
Yeah. We are dealing with TransLink on a regular basis to try and improve our frequency and capacity.
Good.
It's very much top of mind for us.
Any word—
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Any word on the emergency services?
That's also something that we work on constantly, and my hope with this Cypress Village, should it proceed, is that we would get an urgent care center, and I've talked to British Pacific Properties about the need, and luckily, there is a prominent doctor in our community who's very keen to be the spearhead for that facility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carolyn Gale.
Sorry, the next speaker is—
Carolyn Gale.
Coralyn.
Coralyn. Coralyn, thank you. Ms. Gil, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the project. I came this evening thinking that there would be a whole lot more opposition than I've seen, and I'm so happy to see how many people have been in support of it, and it makes me love this community even more. My name is Coralyn Gale. I live on Tower Hill Crescent in Eltonmont. I'm brand-new to West Vancouver, it's only been 11 years.
Yes, you are a newcomer.
Absolute newcomer. It's been 11 years since my family and I decided to move here from Coquitlam, because we're all mountain bikers, skiers, hikers, and we were driving here multiple times a week anyways. So here we are, we love it, we've made a great group of friends. I lead group hikes up the local mountains a couple times a week, normally, and the first time I saw the plan for Cypress Village was at the Shed. I immediately fell in love with it and started telling everyone, hey, guys, when the kids are gone, we are all moving up there, here's what our days are going to look like. We're going to hit the coffee shop, we're going to walk to the coffee shop, we're going to have a coffee, we're going to have a snack, we're going to take that shuttle up the mountain, we're going to go for a hike, a snowshoe, skiing, whatever is on the agenda for that day. We're going to take the shuttle back down, we're going to go for lunch, have a glass of wine, and then we're all going to head home. We call it the Golden Girls Plan, with husbands where applicable. And even though I don't think it was necessary to get up and speak today, because there has been so much support, I was, I was struck by councillor Cassidy's comment that council has a fiduciary duty to uphold the quality of life of its citizens. And that, the Golden Girls Plan, is the quality of life I want to have. I want my grandchildren to be able to live there, I want them to play sports on that field, not a hotel, a field. I want them to go to school there, and I want all of us to be able to walk places, take buses places, and connect as a community. So I'm not getting any younger, can we make this happen, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gil.
Okay, Mayor Stinger, we do have one more name on the list, but Mr. Cusson has spoken already, I don't know if you want to invite other speakers before we repeat.
I would like to give, is there anyone else here this evening that has not had an opportunity to speak for a first time? opportunity to speak for a first time? Hearing none. Mr. Jensen, if you would like to continue, it is your turn.
It's a little difficult to argue with somebody when you're not giving an opportunity, so I'm going to speak strictly to just on the incremental cost or not. These are facts. 2010 to 2020, Chicago, population up 5%, police and fire up 10%. Phoenix, population up 15%, police up 25, fire up 22. Atlanta, population up 15, police up 41. Orlando, population up 15, fire up 30. San Francisco, up 7, public works up 20. Houston, population 18, and public works up 30%. So, I think that those are real facts, that's not theory, and I wasn't provided with any information from planning, even though I had wonderful information, thank you again, but I wasn't. So, what I want to do now is I'll put on my civics hat. We did a survey recently of West Van residents, and just a reminder, Mayor Sager, that in April of '22, we did a survey and we said you were going to get 55.7% of the votes. In fact, you got 52.8. My only reason for mentioning this is to impress upon you the accuracy of our surveys.
Mr. Jensen, as I've emailed you before, I have to enjoy very much your surveys because they're shared. I was at a municipal finance authority meeting in Victoria with my fellow mayors, and two or three of them looked at their phones and they said, oh, gosh, we've got this civic survey on our phone, and they love filling out your surveys on Vancouver Island.
Oh, that's good. So, in summary here, I got to put through these pages. A total of 1,700 people arrived at the survey, 57% from Facebook, 11% for Twitter, and 32% from our email subscribers. And 451 people certified that they either owned a housing unit, they rented a housing unit, or they represented a business. And of those, 72% said West Vancouver should hold a formal referendum. And the 44% have the opinion that West Vancouver Council should never approve any development that has a net carbon footprint. In summary then, so 72% of West Van should not, should hold a formal binding referendum. 68%, I do not support Cypress Village rezoning. And 64%, we should not spend $500,000, $500 million on this. And somehow, the language and the subtlety of this whole thing, there's a bargain where the park is valued at $500 million in order to make the whole thing work. So you can call it CAC calculations, you can call it forgiving CACs, it's nevertheless so. And by the way, 84% of the survey takers, they voted in the last election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. I'd just like to thank you for all of the effort you put in to distribute your side of the information. And I've got to tell you, I've met a lot of nice people because people email me through your website, and they've said some pretty interesting things, and I've written back to virtually every single one of them. And this is what I say to them. Hello, I'll leave the person's name out. Thank you for your email. As your email has come in a form that would indicate you are responding to a social media post, I want to make sure you have the entire development proposal. As this plan has been in the works for a very long time with enormous community input, I wanted to make sure you have the whole plan. All the best. Mark. And I attached to them the document that British Pacific Properties showed to you. And here's just one, a lot of the people write back. And this lady wrote back and said, thank you for sharing the final proposal regarding this development. I have read it with interest, and I have no problem with the concept and plans as presented. So thank you. You've given me an opportunity to send out the full package to a couple of dozen people who have written in because of your public, your social media post.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone else who wishes? Yes, madam.
My name is Janice Ray, and I'm a transplant from Kitsellano.
Welcome.
And I have no other hat to wear except that I don't know a lot about West Vancouver still. I've only lived here for 20 years now. But I've gone to a lot of BPP stuff and municipal stuff to look at pictures and to be spoken to by people and have things explained. And my husband, Andy Krausik, knows more about a lot of stuff to do with that kind of thing than I do, but I make my own mind up. And I just want to say that I thank you very much tonight for the opportunity of hearing both the questions from the council, but also the presentation by BPP and particularly your staff. A respectful process I never imagined when I lived in Vancouver. I'm not saying they don't do it well there, I'm just saying I wasn't involved, and I never imagined it could be that respectful. And I want to thank you.
Thanks very much, and we are grateful to everyone who has come this evening and everyone who has participated throughout all the years in this process. And yes, it is nice to live in a respectful community. Is there anyone else this evening? I take it we have no WebEx tonight?
No one signed up to speak over WebEx tonight.
Nobody signed up on WebEx. Is there anyone else here this evening that wishes to address council on this public hearing? I'll ask for a second time, is there anyone else who wishes to address council? And a third and final time, and I see no speakers, could I have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by councillor Snyder. Oh, sorry, questions? Thank you, councillor Gambioli.
It's always me who's extending things by asking questions. Okay, there was a question that came up at the end of one person's comments, which was, can it be accelerated? So I'm just curious to know from staff's point of view, you know, what would that mean? And that's a legitimate question, I think.
Through the mayor, in terms of acceleration, the PDA has minimum requirements and thresholds that must be met, but there is really nothing stopping things from going faster than those. Those are milestones that have to be met, but things can happen quicker.
And so when you say that things can happen quicker, you know, we have a pretty small planning department for a reason, because we don't really do much planning. Well, Jim does a lot, but I don't mean to say we don't do much planning, we don't do really, you know, relatively speaking, a whole lot of building and, you know, this kind of scale. So what does that mean then, accelerating for our organization?
So, through the mayor, and I think this is important for council, council knows, but just to provide more information for the public, is, you know, as part of this, as this moves forward, we are establishing an office that will be reviewing proposals as they move forward, that will be dealing with subdivisions as that moves forward. And much like we do with every other development, permit development application, those funds will not be a burden on the taxpayer, they'll be recovered through the developer as that moves forward. So we are building the capacity within our teams to be able to deal with this efficiently and effectively. And as Mr. Wallenberg referenced, I mean, he referenced that, you know, there's taxation that comes, but there's also part of the fees and revenues that comes through, building permit fees, development permit fees will also put us in a positive financial position moving forward.
Okay. And then I have one more little inter, just a little question for our friends or our, yes, from BPP. This sounds, this sounds, it might sound a bit odd, but my question is, I know that you're the sort of representatives in BC or Canada for your company, but on a technical level, is the property owned here by, by, okay, the Guinness family bought the property in 1931, is the property actually still owned by a family?
Yes.
Okay.
So, family-owned business.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Watt.
I have a question that may be for engineering. I'm just curious, going back to a comment that when we were discussing Cypress Mountain and the road and the, well, transportation issues there, it's two lanes going up and it's one coming down. And I know this isn't our road, but do we, are we aware of any dialogue with MOTI for any kind of expansion of that, at the very least, so that it's four lanes up and down?
Through the mayor, to councillor Watt, in answer to your question, I'm not aware of any discussions with MOTI in terms of expanding the laneing on Cypress Bowl Road, either being driven by the province themselves, or certainly that's not something that the District of West Vancouver has raised with them. I think from a practical perspective, that might be quite challenging because of the sort of cut-and-fill slopes that would be required, the gradients, and that sort of thing.
Yeah. You know, one thing that I've often thought is you've got the two lanes going up and then you crawl down, and I worry about people crossing that yellow line, you do see it and you see it a lot. And I, you know, I sometimes question whether they will, there will ever come a day where they switch it, as you see, you know, certainly on other roads where there's two lanes and then it switches to the other side. Jeff's nodding, no, or Bryce, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Tupper. Can you answer the question?
And I ask this because I worry with, you know, once we get more construction vehicles and traffic and all the rest of it.
Yeah, no, I guess what was coming to mind and why I was shaking my head is I think my understanding of and being involved with Ministry of Transportation conversations around Cypress Bowl Road is the intent of the two lanes going up is because traffic tends to slow down and there's need for a passing lane on the way up. It's a lot safer to pass as you ascend. I think there's a real safety concern potentially if you're going downhill and you invite people to pass on the way down, when I think there's actually control that happens when people back up. So where it may seem, you know, convenient in one moment, I think overall, from a safety perspective, they look at, they look at that and they want to make sure it's a kind of a safe, safe experience both up and down.
I think about it because, you know, especially in winter, where you've got sliding, somebody coming down, you know, anybody who skis that mountain has probably had a moment in time where, you know, they've slipped and not having that extra lane, I just, I don't know, I just always have a bad feeling about that road.
Thank you. Councillor Watt, councillor Lambert.
Am I on here?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Sager. It's really the bookend question to councillor Gambioli, who asked if the process can be sped up. Is there any downside to deferring consideration of the PDA so that we could look at some of the issues around the encumbrances on district properties that are part of the PDA at the moment?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, staff and the staff team are confident that we've reviewed sort of everything on this plan in terms of all the detail. You know, no stone has gone sort of unturned. We're comfortable in recommending that you proceed. As Ms. Olnick referenced in our presentation, you know, we recommend you close the public hearing and give second and third reading to the project. And I think that's been generally reflected by the public, not only tonight, but we've heard that frankly throughout the consultation program, that there's a need to move on this. You know, council's been briefed numerous times on all of the elements, on the encumbrances, on those things. And, you know, council, of course, is within your right to make decisions how you want on second and third, but our recommendation is that you move forward.
Thank you, councillor Lambert. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions from members of council? And I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by councillor Snyder, seconded by councillor Lambert. I'll call a question. All in favor, contrary carried. Now, we did this evening also set a council agenda, so I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor Sager, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry? Oh, sorry. Before we begin anything else, our corporate officers wish to announce committee memberships. Could I trouble you to do that? I don't have it in front of me.
Absolutely.
This is just a release of decisions about citizen appointments, which we traditionally do at the beginning of council meetings. Thank you.
This is just to announce that council, at its June 24, 2024 closed meeting, that was last night, made the following committee appointments, all for terms ending on December 31, 2025. Frida Pagani and Anna Marie Repstock appointed to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, Jody Heron to the Awards Committee, and Sarah Cosari and Peter Payne to the Environment Committee. Thank you.
I won't do it, but we're going to, I've got a few things I'll say. Thanks so much. So in this, ladies and gentlemen, well, first to discuss these items, I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda. Moved, seconded, question, all in favor, contrary carried. The bylaws that are necessary to move Cypress Ridge, Cypress Village and the Eagle Ridge development are before council now. I, for one, am more than happy and prepared to proceed this evening. Oftentimes, members of council like to have time to reflect, and I respect that. I was extremely happy when council voted unanimously to proceed with the public hearing tonight and the first reading of these bylaws. And if members of council need that and feel that having that time for reflection might sway them to the positive, but if members of council are inclined to vote in the negative, I think those of us who are in favor should be entitled to proceed. Councillor Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. You know, it's been, I think, an extraordinary evening of testimonials, really, by people who have a history with West Van, and I think as one of the speakers noted, there's been a remarkable, more than one speaker, remarkable alignment of views on this, on this project. So I don't see any reason why the bylaws or voting on those shouldn't go ahead regardless of what the positions may be on that. And for myself, I'd be willing to move the first four recommendations.
That is under item number four, recommendations for the official community plan and the zoning bylaws, those four, and that's seconded by councillor Thompson. So ladies and gentlemen, it would appear there is a willingness on council's part to proceed to a vote on this tonight, and I consider this a historic moment. I will be casting my vote strongly in favor, and I would like to thank everyone who has been so involved, our planning staff, our consultants, the citizens. It's been a really remarkable experience, and obviously to see the support this evening, this is a first. I've had the honor of sitting in this chair for many years, and this is the first time I have chaired a public hearing that has had so little opposition. And I am excited for our community. Councillor Gambioli.
I was just assuming the, are we moving and seconding each motion? And then we can speak?
Yes.
Okay.
We have the first four zoning bylaws that are ready for a vote.
So do the mover and seconders not want to say anything?
Um...
Because I've got lots to say.
Okay, councillor Gambioli, let it go.
Okay, okay.
Are you going to be more than five minutes?
Well, there's 10 minutes on the clock.
No, that's 10:08.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Well, you know what? I think I've listened to nine years of information on this project. I think I'm entitled to a couple of minutes of my own.
You absolutely are, councillor.
Jim, don't you think? Well, all right, where to start? I think if, I may be wrong, but I think this is, this is the single largest project since the inception of this district in 1912 that we've ever discussed. So, yeah, that's, among other reasons, that's why this is a historic moment that's, you know, come upon us. So again, as the mayor said, I would also like to thank staff. We have a lot of staff involved in this project who have been involved for many years, Mr. Jim Bailey and Ms. Jen Muller and Ms. Sue Kettler, who are part of our regular staff, have been working for many years on this project, and we thank you so much, I thank you so much. And Ms. Ol... And Ms. Olennick, thank you. And Mr. Wallenberg, great, yes, and Mr. Herb, thank you. Again, I really like to thank you for years of service on this project and your professionalism, and we've got the best team, and I really feel that strongly. So thank you so much. And weeks recently of work diligently answering all the detailed questions and enlightening us as well. So I'd also like to thank the public. We have had years of consultation and feedback and thoughtful and articulate feedback, and, you know, most recently, including a lot of the local groups. West Van Streamkeepers, I noticed, just wrote to us today. Capilano University wrote to us in the last few days in support. West Van Chamber of Commerce, Hollyburn Community Services, and tonight you heard from the North Shore Mountain Bike Association and from Cypress Mountain. So all of those represent many people, and that's pretty impressive. So, you know, historically, it's really interesting, this project, I believe, and a lot of what I find we have to do as a council is to work with decisions of previous councils. And in my opinion, sometimes they weren't really great decisions, but they were made, and we have to kind of muck along. And so as you probably know, in 1931, the decision of the district was to sell 4,000 acres of our district to a family from another country. And when you look at it that way, it's a bit weird, right? A huge portion of our, of our district is owned by a family in another country. And it's really, I think it's really interesting that for 20, 30 years now, we've been discussing how to transfer this development potential, and we have come to the conclusion that now we can actually trade back at least 262 acres to the district again. So anyway, someone brought that up the other day, and I thought that was a really interesting way to look at it. So I believe this Cypress Village plan will be a benefit for our district environmentally, socially, and economically, and I think that a positive vote will show everyone our support for new housing of varied size and tenure, will show our support for densification and not sprawl, will show our support for mitigating climate change, and will show our support for even diversifying our tax base. And so finally, I think that councils are elected to do the right thing, and I believe in this case, the right thing is to support this plan. And I am really grateful to have been a part of this process and this decision.
Thank you, Counselor Gambioli. Counselor Lambert.
So I'm going to move that the proposed official community plan, bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5205-2024, be read a second time.
I'll second that with some comments.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson.
Do you want to do the?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, and so all the gratitude, I think, that was expressed to our groups and everyone involved, and I'm sure all of council shares. And I have to say how much I enjoyed this public hearing, not just because it was pleasant and respectful, but the stories that came out, it really, you know, you really sound like a community, and I think you all got to know each other a little better tonight. Also, it was really the cap, you know, the presentation in response to some of the concerns, I feel completely satisfied with what I've heard, that all, that my concerns and many of the community concerns have been addressed, and that's a really good feeling. You know, as far as the project itself, it's a plan, and it's the type, the beautiful opportunity we have to show that we are serious about building in a community, but in a way that is going to be so, so responsible for the community itself and the result, I'm sure. I love the fact that we're adding to the parkland, 3,300 acres, that's amazing. And I believe Andy Day made a comment when we preserved some of the upperlands, that along with the watersheds, it was, it was the largest urban park in the world that we're actually going to have as our backdrop. And as the mayor likes to point out, the backdrop, our North Shore Mountains, is the iconic vision from Vancouver. So it's, you know, I just feel humble, I feel proud to be part of this, and, you know, I'm grateful to my counselors for being diligent with their questions and inquisitive, caring the concerns of our citizens as well. I think you've had some real champions on board to make sure that you're satisfied as well as us. So thank you, and I'm grateful to second these.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Snyder.
Yes, I'm going to try and keep it very quick, because everything that I was going to say has been said, and I echo Counselor Thompson's comments there. First off, again, I just do want to commend staff and the consultants for all the work they've done, unbelievable presentations, and for keeping us in the loop throughout the entire process. It's been of great value to me. As has been mentioned, no development is not an option, so as far as I am concerned, this is the absolute best option available for the district. I extremely, I extremely strongly believe that this is the best option for protecting the upperlands, while at the same time providing a, building an opportunity for developments that serve many, many of our community, and that means the downsizers, new coming to our community, the staff, the affordable housing, and all the different aspects that this community is going to provide to us. So I won't continue to go on and repeat everybody else's comments, other than the fact that I think that there's been extremely due diligence in all areas. Like you say, Mr. Bailey, all, all rocks have been unturned to try and, you know, make sure that we, we're going to do this right the very first time. So I had a whole bunch of other comments, but I'm going to refrain from sharing those with you at this time, and I, again, do very strongly support this proposal.
Thank you, Counselor Snyder. Counselor Watt.
Yeah, so I've only been on this a year and a half, and I can't imagine what it's been like for some of the rest of you, so kudos on that. And I wish we weren't sitting here tonight. I wish there was no development anywhere, but BPP owns the lands, and I suppose the density swap at the end of the day is the, you know, it is the right thing to do. Would be ideal if it was all parkland, but we're in it now, and I just want to close by saying I truly hope that we, as a municipality, can continue to lobby TransLink, to lobby the province to find transportation solutions, because I, you know, I've said it a lot, and I think some of my council colleagues might be tired of it, but every time we build a coach house, I panic about another person in the community. So I hope that as this gets built out in the years to come, that there are real solutions, because I don't see us riding our bicycles down the hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Watt. Any further discussion? I'll, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Contrary, motion is carried. Is, sorry.
I second.
That was seconded.
I just want to check.
Yeah, sorry, Counselor Cassidy, I wasn't clear if you were in favor or against. The motion is carried, ladies and gentlemen, unanimously. I will.
That was just the second reading.
Yeah, we're going to keep going. Stick with us, gang, there's a bunch more, there's two pages, so.
Okay, this is boring, but okay. Recommend that the proposed official community plan, bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5205-2024, be read a third time.
Is there a second, Counselor Thompson? Any discussion? You've got your mic on, Counselor Snyder, did you?
I was just calling to second.
Thank you. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Contrary, the motion again carries unanimously. Thank you, Counselor Lambert.
And then next, the, that the proposed zoning bylaw, number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5206-2024, be read a second time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? Contrary, again, carried unanimously. And I would appreciate it being recorded for posterity, I think it's very important. Thank you, Counselor Lambert.
And the proposed zoning bylaw, number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5206-2024, be read a third time.
Is there a second? Any discussion? I'll call a question. All those in favor? Contrary, the motion again is carried unanimously. Do you want to carry on, Counselor Snyder?
I'd like to recommend that the proposed phased development agreement, authorization bylaw number 5207-2024, be read a second time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Gambioli, is there any discussion? Counselor Lambert.
I think.
Did I miss, did I miss one?
Nope.
No, no, no.
You did that perfectly, Counselor Snyder.
No, I just want to, you might gather by my previous comments, that I would prefer to have a deferral of this particular section to have a discussion on some of the issues I had raised earlier, but I don't think I'm going to be successful, but I'm going to vote against this particular motion for that reason.
Counselor Cassidy.
I agree with Counselor Lambert. I will not be voting for this particular motion. There are questions that I have, more detail, and I do not think that deferring it for a vote at, for example, July the 8th, our next meeting, for example, so that we have an opportunity to ask somewhat more detailed questions as to the phased development agreement. So I will not be supporting it tonight. I think a couple of weeks.
I believe that public, public hearing is being closed, so that information.
We can discuss it amongst ourselves, is that not correct?
Oh, we can discuss it amongst ourselves, but not with, not with staff.
No, we can discuss it amongst ourselves. I have some questions, and given the significance of this issue, I, I think that is the more pertinent position to hold. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Counselor Watt.
I would agree with Counselor Lambert, that to postpone the final, the final readings would be appropriate to the 8th. You know, it's been a lot to process in one day, and with the LAP, we're taking two weeks on our final decisions on that, so.
Thank you, Counselor Snyder. You've got your mic on.
No, I didn't, I moved it, so I'm.
Moved it, it's, sorry, you moved it. Who seconded it? Counselor Gambioli did?
Fine, I think the question has been called. All those in favor? Contrary, the motion carries. Thank you. And Counselor Snyder?
I'd like to propose that the phased development agreement, authorization bylaw number 5207-2024, be read a third time.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion, I'll call a question. All in favor? Contrary, carried, by the way, it's carried because I cast the deciding vote in favor. And now the recommendations, there's a lot of, if a member of council would be willing to just read as, as written, the 13 bylaws that go, Counselor Gambioli is willing to do that? Thank you.
Sure, I'll recommend that the proposed bylaws be moved as written.
Thank you. And is there a second, Counselor Snyder? Discussion, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Contrary, the motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, well, a bit of a historic night, I would like again to express our most sincere thanks to everyone involved in the process, and we'll very much look forward to seeing all of you out when we cut the ribbon on our beautiful new park. And I've got to tell you, because I happen to live in the western part of the community, when I saw the highway overpass work being done, and I saw them create the road access to create the entrance to Eagle Ridge, my heart stopped. So now we will only go there to cut a ribbon, not for a road going up Eagle Ridge, but for a park in perpetuity for future generations. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you. Oh, yeah, we need a motion to, sorry, you don't leave yet, we need a motion to adjourn. Oh, is there any, all right, there is an opportunity for public questions. Mr. Chapman.
Is there a motion? Park dedication?
No, I don't think so.
The park dedication bylaw was in the list of 13 that were done as written.
It's in the list of 13. It's in the list of 13.
It was moved to the, to the.
Thanks for keeping an eye on us. Any public questions? Hearing none, I'm going to call this quickly. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor Snyder, seconded by Counselor Thompson, all in favor? Contrary, carried. Again, thank you all very much.